Three, four, five. We have everyone. Yeah, one more minute. All right, I've got six thirty if we want to get going. You're on mute. Chair Jennings.
Doesn't look like it could be. Okay, here we go. I'll call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of August seventeenth. And let me read my little script here. The planning commissioners and city staff are participating from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. You will only be able to speak during the meeting if you follow the instructions on the screen under the sign up to speak tab. Once the item is called, no further speaker signups will be allowed, so please make sure you visit malibu city.org/virtualmeeting early to download the Zoom application and sign up to speak. The recording secretary will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Can you call the role Kathleen?
Commissioner Marks.
Here.
Commissioner Euring.
Here.
Commissioner Wilde.
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Here.
Chair Jennings.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Chair Jennings, I move we approve the motion that staff recommends. The agenda is staff recommends.
Is there a second?
I'll second. There you go.
Call the rule Kathleen, please. Kathleen.
Commissioner Marks.
Yes.
Commissioner Euring.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilde.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes.
Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we have a report on the posting of the agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on August seventh, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, that takes us to item one, the rare ceremonial and presentations. We have chair and vice chair elections. Any reason why we can't do this at once? Can we open the nominations for chair and vice chair? Steve.
I'd like to nominate John Mazza's chair.
All right, we want to do them in seconds. You want to do the vice chair as well?
I will nominate Chris Marks as vice chair.
I think the rotation is David Wilde, isn't it?
I, the way I looked it up, it was Chris Marks.
I don't know, I was advised today by staff, but in any event, let's do, let's do the chair first. Get that out of the way. Are there other nominations for chair? Here, none will close the nominations. We'll now vote on the new chair. Kathleen?
Commissioner Marks.
Yes.
Do we, do we have a second for the nomination?
I'll second the nominations.
There we go. Thanks.
Commissioner Marks.
Yes.
Commissioner Euring.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilde.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza.
Yes.
Chair Jennings.
Yes. Okay, John, you've got the con.
Oh, okay. Let me take your vote on vice chair.
Nominations.
We had a nomination.
I believe, do it again, John.
I'm, can I do it? I did it. I move Chris Marks as vice chair.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move David Wilde, nominate David Wilde as vice chair. I believe that's the appropriate order confirmed to me by staff this afternoon.
Okay, we have two. Do we have two seconds?
I'll second John.
Both?
Chris, Jeff, who staff informed you a different, different process?
Richard Malika.
Okay, I'll stick with John.
Who, you mean?
You mean Chris.
Yeah, I'll stick with John's nomination.
Yeah, I did go through the minutes and I thought I got it right.
Richard, did you want to chime in if you, if you looked at this?
I took a look at the calendar we keep of who's been chair and vice chair, and I could not find any evidence that our previous commissioner Craig Hill had had a seat of either chair or vice chair, and since Commissioner Wilde replaced Commissioner Hill, that to me would have been the next person. Craig would have been next, which now would be Commissioner Wilde.
Okay.
So do we need a second on the other nomination at this point?
I thought Jeff seconded.
I believe.
I nominated David.
Right.
Okay, Steve, did you, did anybody second?
I seconded you, John.
Now you second Chris.
Yes.
Anybody second David? Okay, so let's call a roll call.
Commissioner Marks.
Am I able to vote? I, I am.
Yes, everybody votes.
Vote for yourself.
Okay, then yes.
Commissioner Euring.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilde.
Yes.
Chair Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
So we have.
Okay, we have a chair and.
This Marks is vice chair.
Okay, now we have written and oral communications to the public. Do we have any public?
We do not have any, but he signed up for two A.
Okay, now we have planning commissioners, staff and comments and inquiries. Steve?
Just a couple of quick ones for Bonnie. Bonnie, in the, the short term rental meeting that the city council had a couple of weeks ago, there was a recommendation, I think it came from Rick Mullen, that somebody take the ordinance that the planning commission voted on to the city, to the coastal commission and see if they had any major issues with that before it came back to the city councils. Anybody doing that, do you know?
We're in the process right now of setting up a meeting, hopefully, hopefully this week or next week with coastal commission staff to touch base on a number of items, and that would be one of them.
Okay, super. Second question, you know, there's been, not a lot, but an amount of conversation regarding the low census numbers that Malibu has, you know, I mean, I think we're sitting at like thirty-six percent compared to what some of the other communities have. Do we have any theories of why our response is so low?
No, I don't actually, but I, I would say it is very concerning because the census is the basis for so many important things that happened. Yeah, but no, I don't know.
I mean, I mean, for my, I mean, you're smarter than me, and if you don't know, I don't know. I don't know who does has any perspective of what's going on, but it does seem very strange. It seems to me that, you know, at least in the business world, anytime I dealt with a situation where I had no idea what was going on, that used to scare the hell out of me. So I don't know, you know, just the brain trust in city hall that could take a look at that. Farmer's market. I got a call from Denver Bianco today, and I just, and I'm trying, at some point in time, we voted to allow the farmer's market to use the Chilby Cookoff property as parking. Did we not do that?
The city council voted to allow that, and the planning commission voted on a zoning text amendment that would allow for processing a TUP, I believe it was, to allow temporary parking there while the college is under construction. At this point, the, the farmer's market has not applied for those things. Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're still waiting on them to submit an application so we can move that forward.
That is correct. We've spoken to them and I believe provided them with the materials, but nothing has been submitted.
Okay, so it's really, it's, it's, they're on their side, they slowed it down. I mean, look, I, I just think the farmer's market has been like a venue of fresh air here in Malibu, gives you a place to go on Sundays. You, you know, they, they've got the social distancing down, you get to see people and you get to buy good food, so I would like to see that continue on. And the last comment I have, I got a bunch of calls from people who have suggested that when the short term rental ordinance comes back to the city council, that you consider doing it in a special meeting. As opposed to putting it, you know, you've got three now, three different versions of ordinances that they've got to consider. And, you know, at least one man's opinion is decisions made at eleven thirty at night probably aren't the best. So if there's a way to schedule a special meeting so we can get that done early in the evening and give everybody a chance to talk, I think a lot of people would appreciate that. That's all I've got. John, back to you.
Okay, who would like to speak now? Anyone else? Okay, I'll make some comments. First, a theory on the census. This, this is a percentage of what we are perceived to have as a population.
No, it's not, John. It's a percentage of households.
Well, we don't know the households until we do a census.
Now, we know we've got about fifty-five hundred households in Malibu.
Right, but you can only be in the census if you live here. Now, we have had a great number of houses burned down. We've had a massive increase in short term rentals. And we've had a lot of second homes being sold. So it may not be as low as it shows. It may not be great. But I'd be very surprised if our population has not dropped as far as the census goes. And we'll find that out next year, but.
Well, John, if you're correct, okay, and I'm not arguing against that, it, it, it sort of says that as we make decisions about what we should do with Malibu, if I've got a large, we've got about fifty-five hundred homes, we got about nineteen hundred responses. And if the rest of those are short term rentals, second homes and whatever heck else, it really does say we got to rethink what we're doing with the city because that's a different population model than what we're working with right now, just for what it's worth. I think the smarter we can get about that, the better off we're going to be.
Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to find out until the census is done. I don't know when that is. I think it's around February or March. So it's gonna be a while. It'll be a new council, I'm sure. The second thing I wanted to mention is the farmer's market, and we should be very creative. The farmers, I went to the farmer's market this weekend. There is no parking. Basically, I went at ten, they were all full, they were all street parking. So the college, even though the, the the college promised us an open hearing that they were going to have a lease, they don't have a lease. They have to, they're week to week. Now, I just want to point out that directly next to the city hall is a mobile home that's on a temporary use permit. Mobile Home Showroom that has been on temporary use permit for nine months. So I think we should at least give them that.
Mr. Mazza, they, that, just for clarification, the Model Home showroom processed a series of temporary use permits, and then they ran out of them, so they've had to shut down for the intervening last couple of months so that they could process a CUP, not, I'm sorry, a coastal development permit and a new temporary use permit to accommodate their use, so that is in the works.
Yeah, but they're still there.
The building is still there.
Yes. Now, I want to comment a couple of things. Craig Hill sent in a comment about noticing. And we have had that problem over the years. I've been on the county, where people complained about it. I've never investigated how we check and make sure everybody's been notified. And we all, and he also suggested, I believe at the council meeting, that meetings could be Zoom meetings could be opened up for county and other people in certain ways. And I wondered if we had done any, well, first, the, the process and how we verify that people are actually notified, especially in burn areas. And then whether or not there's any study at all about opening up these council meetings or planning commission meetings, or I guess all the other commissions now for sharing minutes, which would cheer, save a lot of time for a lot of commissions. Is there any work being done on any of that?
Um, I'm happy to clarify about noticing. We do get a lot of questions about this, and I think a lot of people misunderstand how the process works. When an applicant submits a project, they are required to submit noticing data for all of the property owners and occupants within a five hundred foot radius or a thousand foot radius of the subject property, depending on what the zoning is. Those mailing labels, I'll call it, although we do it digitally now, so it's not, we don't get labels literally anymore. But the process requires the applicant to obtain those from the latest available information from the LA County Property Assessor. So, and then to certify that the labels are basically complete and accurate. So that is what is used to mail out all of the note, the required noticing that we have. We occasionally get comments from people who might have called and asked staff a question about a project or sent in a letter or something like that, and people assume that they will then be notified of everything to do with a project after that. But in order to become an interested party, you need to make that request in writing. Very often, staff will ask a person who's, who's commented on a project if they want to be added as an interested party so that they get notification, and we'll do it at that time. The other thing is people should understand that if they are an interested party for a particular application, that is for that application unless they make the specific request to be, we haven't always had this ability, but we do now to allow people to sign up to be an interested party for, on a parcel basis, rather than for a, a specific project. So if somebody makes that request, we can now do that, but we have not always had the ability to do that. But the property data that is submitted by applicants with applications is certified by the applicant. And it is mailed out, and we keep track of returned mailers, so we know that if, you know, somebody's mailbox was gone, or it was returned to sender or something like that, we do keep that information for a period of time. But that is essentially how the noticing process works, and it's actually specified in the municipal code what the noticing radius is for planning projects. And then as a courtesy, or just as kind of, it's, it's been a common sense policy for as long as I've been here. Five hundred feet is the standard thing, but in our, our ten and greater zoning districts, because of the size of the parcels, five hundred feet doesn't always capture that many parcels, so that's when we apply a thousand foot radius. So that's, it's all based on the code except for the policy that's been in place for a long time to extend it out to a thousand feet based on the zoning.
Is there a form that somebody can fill out to become either a permanent or a temporary noticeee?
On a parcel or for everything? You can subscribe to be noticed of everything that the planning commission looks at. If you're interested in, sorry? Um, if you're interested in, sorry?
Just per parcel? Is there something that go?
They, they should contact Patricia Salazar, and she will take care of that.
Is there anything on the website that tells them that?
Uh, I'm not sure. I can find out.
Okay, and then uh, is there any penalty for an applicant to pluck names off the noticing list? If we go back and look at a noticing list and some dissident neighbor just doesn't happen to be there, is there a penalty?
Um, it, it means that the, there was a, a noticing flaw in the, in the project, and if that was found to be the case, if the, if there are, you know, certain addresses from the radius that are not included, then um, and that is identified within, you know, whatever the statute of limitations is, then the, yes, the, the project would then need to have an, a new notice.
Yeah, you put the whole project at, at, at risk, so not a good idea.
So, for example, tonight, if somebody said they didn't get noticed, and they go to the file, and they find out that they, they weren't on the list, they can appeal, or what do they do?
If, if there was improper notice done, they should contact staff so it can be investigated. If, if it was, then the, the item will be re-noticed and brought back.
And, and that's, that's happened before. You might remember that um, MRCA project to add some, a brand-new stairway towards the um, Big Rock Beach area. Um, there was a neighbor there, the MRCA actually goofed up on their noticing data, and um, so we did end up bringing the project back through for a new coastal development permit hearing before the planning commission.
Okay, and then um, has there been anything done on, on thinking about changing our meetings to make them uh, where we can share minutes or or make it more accessible?
Um, but sorry, Trevor, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say that, that, that'd be a decision to be made by the council. You know, some of the difficulties, you know, weighing the difficulties, the benefits and the drawbacks to it, uh, to donate minutes and making sure people are actually, you know, who they say they are in the Zoom world and how that works. Get to them if, if they want to adopt a different system. So um, any ideas that want to be thrown that way to the council? Um, suggest that they, they speak to them at, at public comment, or, or contact them.
And that's been brought up, it was brought up at the last council meeting and discussed, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they can't take action, so, so they, one of them has to bring it back.
They seem to put it on the agenda.
Okay. Um, anybody else have any uh comments for public or questions of Bonnie?
It's like, yeah.
Chris does.
Yeah, John, do you mind if I go?
Go for it.
And John, can you see all of us, all five of us, or do you see like four of us?
I just see Trevor and, and you and.
Okay, so when we'll, we'll just.
But, I'm sorry, um, let's make sure that um, Chair Mazza can see everybody, so he knows when people are talking. Alex, can you um?
Can you click on gallery view, John?
Yeah.
At the top of your screen?
There's a little, I don't have anything that says gallery view.
There's a little box up there. Click on that box, and it'll open it up.
There.
There you, okay.
Okay, now you can see all of us?
Uh, yeah, well, I'm missing somebody. Let's see, one, two, three, four. I'm missing Chris right now.
Uh, this Chris? I'm waving.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got y'all. I got you.
Okay, cool. So, Rick, you can see everyone since you're uh, running.
Exactly.
Let us know if you can't see everybody, so we can get that fixed.
I, I, I did want to kind of start with responding to some questions as, as we were talking this through. I just want to clarify, for the census, it has been ten years. Fires definitely hurt us, arguably S T Rs, but now census is different than voting, and of, someone who has a second home could still choose to vote at either their residences, just to kind of uh, you know, get to a clarification here, or does the vote have to go with a registration? Because I think John's touching on an important point, which is that um, really, what, what, what uh, how are we gonna be tracking what city it is that we represent? Is it tracked basic, uh, based on the census, based on the voting pool? Uh, just any guidance there to kind of, uh, just inform kind of, you know, what, what we're looking at?
As I understand it, it's not voting. It is residence. You have to, it's your permanent residence where you're counted. So you could have a house in Idaho and a house here. You can't answer yes on both for the census.
Understood, okay. And then, okay, so, so I, I, I think that, that is an important point to bring up. Um, on the story poll issue, noticing, um, I should say the noticing issue. Um, I was thinking just kind of comically, that smoke signals would be great, because then, you know, that, everybody can see that. Um, the story polls are kind of the next best, best thing. Um, and then you got the posting kind of at the street. Um, has there any, ever been any discussion of having something posted on, hosted on, say, the G I S site which lists properties which are either in their twenty-one noticing day period or coming to that soon? Um, just so someone, anyone in the public can go to that site and see everything which is within the twenty-one day period, or I would think ideally even ahead of that. Has that been discussed or considered ever in the past?
Um, actually, yes. We've, we've uh, been looking at a number of different ways to integrate G I S with our um, our database of development applications that would make it a more seamless way to use the G I S to see what the development activity or permit activity is on a particular property. Um, there are, you probably are aware, there are communities that have that service available, and it's something that we were working towards, and then, and then, you know, the last couple of years have been a little disrupted by a number of uh, things. Um, but yeah, it's something that I think would be really beneficial to um, everybody, staff. It would be great for staff. It would be great for the public, so um, the short answer is yes.
Okay.
But today, we're able to do that.
Okay, so I'll kind of bring the next uh, two other, three other questions I had into one. Um, would it help if we were to put something on our agenda to talk through what that might look like, Bonnie, or is that just something where um, that's, staff needs to just kind of find the bandwidth? Is there clear direction to your staff uh, for what could go on there?
It's, the, um, it really boils down to budget and resources. Um, and right now, our I T staff um, is juggling a lot with managing Zoom meetings and, and all the various commissions that are now meeting again and things like that, and also the digital submittal process. So really, it comes down to budget and the work plan. Um, so I I, it's something the city manager's been very interested in making available to the public as well. Uh, it's just right now a ma- a matter of bandwidth and, and those budget and work plan.
Okay. Okay, and then the other two items are, um, I know when we had that uh, water, water tank come up on Bush, uh, there were some questions that came up kind of as a side conversation to what all could that capacity manage, you know, if, because a perception is still there that with a large fire, we'll have enough, you know, water capacity to fight a fire, and the guidance we got was, no, we don't. Um, I wanted to see if there's any appetite amongst the, the, you know, the commissioners here to have a formal discussion on that to increase in awareness, starting kind of from the planning commission if appropriate, what capacity we truly have from our water system. So I'm just trying to kind of get ahead of a perception that um, uh, we won't have taken appropriate actions in a fire. You know, there's only so much capacity the city has, and I'd want to get just more public awareness of that. And to me, this seems like a pretty good venue, but I just wanted to float it out there as an idea. And similarly, I had a similar uh, concept. I know in some of our, a number of our uh, discussions, we've talked about a number of um, ambiguities or, or uh, uh, kind of language discrepancies in our code. Some examples that come to mind recently are floor area, service area has been a, a big one in the past. Is that another item which um, there's any appetite amongst the commissioners to have a more formal agenda item on that as a second potential discussion?
If we're, if we're talking about bringing back legislative change and things like that, it needs to be set from the, you need to get direction to have that initiated from the um, city council. So if, if that's something that you guys want to bring up, or um, an examination of uh, of, of the uh, water infrastructure or something like that, I'm not sure that would fall within the, the ambit of a, of the planning commission for that aspect, but um, you know, again, it'd be something to bring up with the council to have them set that up.
Okay, and what about the language? Any can, any, uh, would that be appropriate in this audience?
Then you'd be talking about doing a zoning text amendment to, to add either a, a policy or a change to the language to examine that. So um, that would be, again, something that we need to be initiated by council. Uh, and I, I know staff resources are tight to get stuff to, to commission now, so if it worked, if that's gonna be an item they want to, you guys want to push forward, just let your council members know, or bring it up to them to have them set, is, is that something that you want to move on the agenda for?
Okay, so both those items that come through city council work with our, whoever is our preferred contact there, whatever?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I just wanted to put this out there.
Chris, I just want to comment on a couple of those. The uh, water tanks most likely would be covered by public safety. Probably would not be covered by public works because it's not our, they're not under the jurisdiction of Malibu, um, structures go. The other thing is about, I'd say, five years ago, Jeff probably knows, uh, the city hired a consultant to rewrite our whole municipal code because it was so screwed up. And uh, our, the definitions didn't match and et cetera. And uh, after about six months, they gave up. Uh, so that that was assigned at one point. Um, they just kind of faded into the sunset.
Well, uh, well, it's a little more complicated than that, but yes, there was a, a comprehensive zoning code update that was proposed, and then a second phase that was going to address the local coastal program, but it, it, it was turning into quite a daunting task, as you, as you all are well aware, there are a number of things to be addressed, and so doing it in one big giant um, package was going to be very, very cumbersome and complex, and um, it, it did eventually get just tabled for the time being. We still have some drafts, internal administrative drafts, that um, once we start working on um, specific uh, code update sections such as to total development square footage or floor area, or um, any, any of those things, um, we could turn to those for reference.
Hey, anybody else?
Yes.
Yes, David.
Uh, two quick things, uh, really just points of information. I've had a number of people uh, talk to me about how horrendously dangerous Pacific Coast Highway has become. I think weekend before last, there were three separate accidents the same day that closed the highway in different spots. Um, and my question is, what working group is now representing the city in conversations, if there are any, um, you know, with those who are in charge, state, county, whoever it may be now, of keeping Pacific Coast Highway as safe as it can be? Because it sure isn't very safe right now.
There, go ahead, Bonnie.
There's, there is the Public Safety Commission. Uh, I believe there is a, a multi-agency um, group that deals with Pacific Coast Highways specifically, but I would, I could, I'd be happy to get you the, the information, do a little, get some more specific information and, and provide it to you.
If you could get me who the head of that group is and the contact information, I can provide it to people who have contacted me.
Okay.
Dave? Oh, I'm sorry. Are you done, David?
No, I have one more point, but you're on mute, Steve.
If you get a chance to talk to Chris Frost, he's head of the Public Safety Commission. He's been working on this issue for a very long time. I mean, he, he has given me more insight in terms of what's going on. He may be your best contact to get information.
And, and also, David, there is a task force. I believe Karen Barrar is the city's task force member on public safety on Coast Highway. It includes Santa Monica and other regions in Caltrans. And they meet once a month.
Great, thank you. Uh, my other quick point is, I just wanted to, I agree very much with what Steve said about how complicated things are now on the short-term rental situation with three different ordinances. Nobody can understand you know, easy form, which ones going where and why. I want to compliment the city council on focusing on the one part of this that everyone can understand, which is enforcement. Uh, we know what disturbing the peace means, and we have to have an ability to, you know, come down hard on that when it happens. And that hasn't been so easy to do in the problems that we've had. Instead, you know, we're, we're going for this sort of throw-out-the-baby-with-the-bath-water approach, and you know, the resolutions that'll close down ninety percent of the business, which in my opinion is a mistake, but we weren't. We were asked by the city council to give them something that resembles Santa Monica, so we did. But I, I personally believe it is much better to regulate very tightly those people who are permitted to do this, and if they violate it in any kind of defined way where there are too many cars, too many people, too much alcohol, any of those things, you know, they get one warning, then they should be kicked out for six months, and if it happens a second time, kick them out for a year. Um, but I mean, the, the intolerable situations that exist in a couple of these places just have to be stopped. But I don't think you should stop the entire business because it's, you know, in many ways, good for the community, other than the bad ones. Personal opinion, I'm done.
Uh, does anybody else have anything? I just want to mention on enforcement also, there's in the last three weeks or four weeks, there's been an awful lot of talk in my area and other areas about parking enforcement, especially at Point Dune Headlands, where people are parking in the park, on the sidewalks, uh, in people's driveways. And so enforcement in general is important, especially right now. If you've been up Broad Beach Road on a Saturday or Sunday, you wouldn't believe it. Way beyond anything I've ever seen. So, if nobody has anything else, we'll move on. Um, we are now on the consent items. Any, does the public pull anything? Or does the, uh, commission wish to pull any item? Uh, three B one and three B two.
We don't have any members of the public that wish to pull anything.
Oh, David?
No, I would move that we adopt the consent items.
Okay, uh, we don't have to vote on that, right? Because it's just a receive and file?
They're both receive and file, so what, you can say without objection, both items are received and filed.
Yeah, without objections, both items are received and filed. We will now go on to uh, item five A, which is two, three, nine, four, zero, Malibu Road.
Good evening, Chair Mazza, members of the planning commission. I'll give you a quick presentation for this. Uh, next slide, please. The project you have before you is located on a beachfront parcel along Malibu Road, and the scope of work is limited to the existing rock revetment only. Uh, there will be no other work taking place on the project site, uh, no additions to the home or anything like that. It's going to be strictly uh, work to the revetment, and as mentioned in the staff report, the work will take place from the land side of the revetment. Uh, no work is proposed to take place on the beach. Next slide, please. The scope of work is limited to the portion of the rocks that you see there at the lower right-hand portion of the screen. And the work will propose, uh, proposes the removal of a portion of that staircase and the landing that is there, and then uh, the pouring of new rock, there'll be formed-in-place rocks uh, with concrete that at the end will provide a path down to the shoreline. Next slide, please. This is the scope of the demolition work. As you can see, the stairs come off of a property down coast to the Santa Monica side. The screen there, the right-hand side. Where those stairs cross the property line, the, the concrete that will be removed as well as a portion of the landing that you see there on the down-coast side of the property at the top uh, with the three planters uh, on it. That landing will be reduced in size to around roughly three by three feet, basically the building code minimum for a uh, a landing. Next slide, please. And what you can see here is essentially a diagram showing the areas to be removed with that crosshatching. The areas that are white, like you see the landing there at the bottom of those stairs coming off the property, that will be what remains. And then when the rocks, like I mentioned, there will be twenty percent of those rocks will be repaired or replaced, and in doing so, there will be the path that you see there, a stepped path that, that the occupants of the property can use uh, to access the beach. Next slide, please. Staff recommends adoption of the planning commission resolution to approve the project, which uh, would then approve the coastal development permit. Also, I'd like to point out a correction that in the staff report, I believe I referenced the ninety-eight permit from the coastal commission that allowed for the rock revetment that actually allowed for the, the uh, a repair to a wall of on the other portion of the property. The revetment appeared to be part of a nineteen eighty-six coastal development permit. And upon review of that coastal development permit, I did not see any uh, conditions that would limit the future uh, renovation or uh, repair of the existing revetment. I'm available for any questions as well as the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, uh, before we do that, can we have disclosures?
Steve? Yes. I, I visited the site with Commissioner Mazza.
I visited the site with Commissioner Mazza, we met with Don Schmitz, uh, walked around the property, took a look at the revetment. Basically, what we learned, Richard, was they're not replacing the rocks, they're going to come up with some kind of a cement replacement to fill in the gaps that have occurred in those rocks over time. Uh, is that what you understand?
Yes, I believe the report called them uh, capstones.
Yeah.
Is to, my understanding is the, the revetment settles over time.
Right.
Thing, things also break down, so it goes in between, yes.
So they're just filling in the gaps that have occurred. So that, there's nothing I learned that wasn't pretty much in the staff report.
David?
Same thing. I visited the site, met with Don Schmitz, and came with the same, away with the same conclusion that um, it's basically plugging holes so that water doesn't get through the, the stones that are there now and undermine the foundations uh, from the beach.
Uh, Chris?
No disclosures.
Uh, Jeff?
Yeah, I spoke with Don Schmitz briefly uh, today, um, talked a little bit about the interesting aspect of the stairway crossing the property line, but not, nothing really relevant to the project itself. Um, apart from that, nothing that wasn't in the staff report.
Okay, uh, I had the same disclosure as Steve, except I did talk to uh, Richard this afternoon about and Don Schmitz, actually, about the wave uprush study such as it is and why it would be appropriate if it's only one and three quarters feet. And it was explained that it doesn't really count because this is a repair. And if they ever have to do anything else, they'll have to go back and get a whole new CDP to go higher. Chris?
I do have one question I wanted to get in ahead of the applicant, if I may, John?
Sure.
Okay, um, if we are, and this is probably direct first to Richard, but if we are going to fill kind of gaps between the rocks with cement, um, how has that in terms of its design been um, accounted for in the wave uprush? Because water won't have anywhere to go between rocks, it'll flow farther up. Is that, is, and, and maybe the applicant can address that.
The applicant can go into greater detail, but it, it's not going to result in uh, like you've seen on some of the beach homes, I've seen on the eastern end of town, where it's almost like a slurry mix that creates kind of a solid wall or something like that. Uh, that is not going to happen here. There will still be gaps in the rocks. Uh, it's not, it's not going to be completely filled in.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Chris, uh, Steve and I asked him that. Uh, if you fill a, a rock revetment, you put a hose down there and fill it with cement, it will not flex and it will uh, eventually collapse. So these are actually not in the rocks, they're on top of them. They're actually molded to
Got it, okay.
The uh, revetment. And Don can correct that. That's the way I understood it.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions before we go to uh, the public and, and the applicant? Okay, can we have uh, do we have any uh, comments other than the applicant?
We have um, the applicant team of Don Schmitz, uh, David, Shaheen, and Reg Brown, but no other uh, public speakers.
Okay, Don, you can, you, as you know, you can reserve your time. Uh, but you have no more, no other speakers to you, but do you like to reserve any time?
Uh, if I don't have anybody to rebut, uh, again, this is Don Schmitz, uh, Mr. Shaheen is my client, he's here to answer questions, as is Mr. Reg Brown, who is the coastal engineer. Uh, so I don't think uh, we need to retain time. If there's no other speakers, I'll just try to get through this presentation expeditiously so that you can move your agenda tonight.
Okay, you have 15 minutes, go ahead.
Before you start the clock, can we get my presentation, please? There we go. Uh, I want to start off by commending uh, the commissioners and uh, Mr. Malika in regards to their responses on uh, the design of the faux rocks. That was spot on, very accurate. Next slide, please. So this is an aerial photograph, uh, it's a half an acre lot, the single-family residence in Rock Revetment. And thank you, Richard, for the uh, the correction, uh, was permitted in 1986. It's also a contiguous rock revetment with our neighbors to the east of 23936 Malibu Road. Next slide, please. So this is an application for less than 20% of the existing previously permitted rock. This is an important number. Uh, this comes from City Malibu LCP LIP section 13.4.2 B1C on the conformance. And this is why the coastal engineer report by Reg Brown had to be very, very exact, make sure that we were staying underneath that 20% number. Next slide, please. So this is reflected in the staff report, it is not considered new development pursuant to this component of the LIP. And that is what is before you today. It's a, it's a very low level repair. Next slide, please. So the, we're implementing these faux rocks and the, the, the revetment is not considered new development in the LIP. This is something that is reflected in the staff report. This is on page five of the city staff report. And staff has provided us a lot of guidance to make sure we stayed within the confines of that regulation. Next slide. So this is a graphic, it shows where we're going to be demolishing the existing stairs and portion of the landing and the stairs which go down the face of the revetment on our side of the property. Uh, there's some controversy in regards to this, we disagree, we think that it was uh, properly permitted by the coastal commission back in the 1980s. Uh, but uh, it's, it's sort of a moot point because we're going to be demolishing that portion of the landing and the steps down the face of the revetment. Next slide, please. This is the area whereupon we're going to be doing the repair uh, to the uh, revetment. It will be maintained, uh, Commissioner Marks, as a, as a flexible revetment, as opposed to, you know, Richard gave an excellent uh, response to that, as opposed to dumping a slurry in there, making it into essentially a rigid seawall. And I'll have more slides for you in a moment. Next slide, please. So this is, the, the picture on the left is uh, from the 1980s, and you can see the revetment. And if you look carefully at the 2008 oblique aerial photograph, you can see there's been settling. Like the revetment's 32 years old, it's been through El Niños and some pretty significant storms. So there's been some settling and, and uh, some voids created in the revetment, which is what this permit will repair. Next slide, please. So this is a picture of one of the areas where we have the voids. Next slide, please. And here's another picture, and you can see that, that uh, the revetments uh, all up and down the coastline are designed to be at one and a half to one slope. Uh, because we've had some settling of the revetment, you have areas where it's now a one-to-one slope uh, for the face of the revetment, and that is inconsistent with an engineered rock revetment. So the faux boulders that we're going to be creating, pumping in the concrete and forming them, they're right there on the face of the revetment, is going to get it back to that engineered one and a half to one slope face. Next slide, please. So this is just a cross-section from the coastal engineers' report, showing where we're going to do the new pour-in-place concrete cap rock to fill in those voids, to get that one and a half to one slope, so we have a properly engineered rock revetment. Next slide, please. So the project is necessary to protect the, the project. The rock revetment is necessary to protect the existing onsite wastewater treatment system in the house. Next slide, please. So the uh, the findings in regards to this is this absolutely essential that we do this work so that we maintain the integrity of the rock revetment to continue to protect the house and the septic system that was permitted and constructed in the 1980s. Next slide, please. And the uh, staff uh, coastal engineer reviewed the project and determined to be consistent with all the applicable requirements in the LIP chapter 10. Next slide, please. And the project has also been reviewed by all the other departments, public works, environmental health, et cetera, to make sure that it wasn't going to have any impacts on any other applicable regulations addressing the septic system or the integrity of the house. Next slide, please. The project has also been reviewed by the state lands commission, and they determined that, as quoted from their letter from staff's review, the material submitted, the most watered portions of the proposed improvements are landward of any of the plotted and shown mean high tidelines. Next slide, please. So uh, the LIP section 10.4 uh, says that all development must be set back 10 feet landward of the most landward survey mean high tideline. And in fact, that is exactly what we are doing. This is from page six of the excerpt uh, uh, from the city staff report. We will be set back 10 feet from the mean high tideline for these repairs. Next slide. So we want to point out that what is before you tonight is identical to what was approved by the commission just uh, the last year or two for our neighbors at 23936 Malibu Road. Next slide. Here's a copy of the plans from our neighbors uh, uh, permit, which was approved by you, where they did these cast-in-place concrete uh, capstone, and then cut their stairs down the face of the capstone. Next slide, please. And this is a good slide for you to see, especially for your query, uh, Commissioner Marks. The uh, arrows are pointing to the faux boulders which were cast in place. So um, it, it's, it's designed to look like rock which was brought in, but because we're pumping in the concrete, we're avoiding the heavy equipment on the beach, which is the traditional way that you build or revetment. You bring in the big front loader, uh, skip loaders, bringing in these six, eight-ton capstones and placing them on the revetment. By pumping in the concrete, we have much less impacts to the beach and disturbance to the neighbors. And it looks, looks uh, natural, consistent with what the revetments are out there already. Next slide, please. So I'm going to move past this quickly. This is just talked about, there is no uh, less environmentally damaging alternative. And it is necessary to protect the onsite wastewater treatment system. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, uh, the, the repair is required to ensure the continued protection of the single-family residents and onsite wastewater treatment system as certified by your coastal engineer and by the consulting uh, coastal engineer Reggie Brown. It is less than a 20% repair and maintenance, consistent with the LIP and municipal code. The project's compliant with the LCP and building code requirements. It's set back 10 feet uh, landward from the mean high tideline for those repairs. It's identical to the revetment repair uh, that was approved by this commission in the city right next door. And there is a condition of approval that we're going to be recording a deed restriction, that there will be no future seaward extension or expansion of the revetment per LIP section 10.6B, which we are in uh, in agreement with. So uh, with that, I'll go ahead and I'll wrap it up. I just wanted to be thorough. It is a fairly simplistic proposal, but I wanted to make sure that uh, there was clarity on everything that was in front of the commission. As usual, I thank you for your time and your staff's time, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, uh, before we move on, I went to uh, full screen and everybody disappeared. So uh, I have a question of staff, do I go back to side-by-side mode?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. That, I didn't want to screw anything up and have to leave the meeting. Okay, um, any questions, uh, Mr. Schmitz, by one of the staff, by any of the commissioners? Chris, you're on.
Yeah, just to, just um, I don't know who this is best direct to, but I'm trying to kind of get my head around two aspects of the uh, the code here. One says the 20% limit um, on the uh, the, the change. Um, and then the second, just not expanding the, the development more than 10-foot seaward. I'm just trying to figure out if the toe of this revetment over time, and I'm not really concerned about this project, I, I trust everything's good here. But with those two aspects, the, the, let's say we look at this in another 40 years or 35 years, whatever it takes for, for this type of maintenance to be needed again, is that number constantly adjusted? You know, if that makes sense, because obviously, if we, if we were to look at this thing exactly it was when permitted in uh, 89 or 86, whatever it was, versus today, um, it's, it's shape, it's footprint, its size has shifted. Um, and in the future, the same will happen again. So what's kind of the, the code guidance on how we manage this over time? Both for the distance to the, to, to seaward and um, that 20% limit? Looks like, Richard, you're pondering, so maybe you're best positioned.
The, actually, there's a condition on the 86 permit. Um, the 10-foot setback, I believe, is what you're focused on at one part of that question?
Yeah, there is one part, yeah.
And that moves, that does affect the repair. So these repairs are taking place landward of that. If something in the future had to happen, it would too have to be landward of that number. However, uh, the state lands comes up with that determination. And then it's 20% of the materials uh, that are there, because um, these, like the neighbor next door, we're not allowing them to work in that uh, right to pass uh, wet sand area, but there's also a access easement on this property, so they have to stay out of that area. And so, yes, some rocks will end up there over time, uh, but they need to focus on the rocks that are landward of that line.
So theoretically, then um, the, they, they couldn't do a 20% change, say, today, and then a year from now, do it again. It's only once the conditions have changed and no longer be that one and a half to one slope and whatever it is where it's no longer acting to protect the home and the um, the septic, where they then could re, reevaluate that 10-foot distance and 20% volume.
Yes, you are correct there, and I also think too that part of the factor of the coastal commission is that um, this is the first time in 20 years this thing has been worked on. And this is probably pushing out another 20 years to 40 years. You're getting to a place where ideally something will take place in that property that causes a seawall or some new development to go in.
All right, and then, and then the last one, just um, hypothetically, again, if, if there's wave action which actually pulls the toe of that new revetment, you know, past the 10-foot line which has been established, is the, is the landowner responsible for bringing that revetment back in to the proper distance, or does nature just run its course?
To my knowledge, they are not, unless there's something grossly negligent they did, but in the past, those rocks have just worked their way down, and because, you know, the sand comes and goes, and it just becomes part of the beach.
Okay, that, that was it. I, I got one more, but I'll, I'll, legal for now.
Chris, uh, I mean, Richard, let me ask you to clarify that. There is a provision in this, this uh, resolution that says they may not work on this project again uh, without a CDP, is that correct?
Yes, ideally, there shouldn't need to be any more maintenance of this structure. And there is going to be a deed restriction to that effect, yes.
Okay, anybody else? Chris?
Sorry, just the last one. That 20% calculation, I just want to clarify, is that only for the volume of material on the applicant's property, or is it a combination of the applicant's revetment and the neighboring property? Because it was mentioned that that's kind of a contiguous, you know, development there.
We've all, like, in the case of the neighbor as well, when that was looked at by the planning commission, it was the revetment that is on the subject property, not off property.
Great, okay, thank you.
Steve?
Make a motion, move staff recommendation.
I got one comment before you do that, if you would. Uh, Richard, I just want to clarify one thing. This is, this is a, I think Don said this was an acre lot. Um, or some version of that. So as the code stands today, this could be a 40,000-plus house, if they wanted to build a new house there.
If someone were to build a new house there because it's beachfront, they would be limited by uh, the setbacks, view corridor uh, and string lines. So however that works out, uh, my guess is that they put a two-story box there, it would be a large home.
Okay, uh, Stephen made the motion?
Make a mo, my motion stands, yes.
And then David seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Yuring?
Yes.
Commissioner Wile?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Oh, yes, still, yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Okay, we're off to uh, appeal number 20-008. Appeal of planning and directors approval of administrative plan review dash Woolsey fire number 19-060. Site plan review number 19-099 for improvements to modify, like the like, rebuild the single-family residence and associated development uh, at 5936 Hillary Heights Avenue. Okay, may we have a staff?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Mazza and members of the planning commission. The item you have before you tonight is for appeal number 20008 for up APR WF number 19060 for the project located at 5936 Hillary Heights. Next slide, please. Pictured here is the vicinity map and aerial photograph. The subject property is located at the end of Hillary Heights, north of Malibu High School, and within the Malibu Park neighborhood. Prior to the Woolsey fire, the property was developed with a three thousand four hundred and seventy seven square foot single family residence, a nine hundred and sixty five square foot second unit, a seven hundred square foot detached garage, and a seven hundred and twenty square foot detached hobby room slash greenhouse, all of which were destroyed in the Woolsey fire. PVWF number nineteen one eighty eight was approved in September twenty nineteen to rebuild a like for like replacement of the residence, the second unit, and the hobby hobby house slash greenhouse. Next slide, please. Once the applicant started to work on the detailed project plans, it was determined that a modification would be required to meet the fire department requirements regarding the length of the driveway and a new turnaround area. These changes resulted in a new real relocated attached garage and a shift of the second story. The pro the proposed garage is partially underground and is not considered a subterranean garage or basement because it daylights more than three feet and therefore is considered a story. The proposed second story addition was relocated in order to avoid a three story condition on the property. The proposed replacement structure is mostly located on the previously existing building pad. Because the project proposes to relocate the second story and increase its size by two hundred and seventy four square feet from four hundred and forty two square feet to seven hundred and eleven square feet, the relocation and increase in size in the second story has triggered a site plan review for construction above eighteen feet in height. The story polls pictured before you highlight the size and bulk of the proposed addition above eighteen feet in height. Next slide, please. The proposed project includes a two hundred and seventy four square foot addition to the second floor, an attached eight hundred and eighty seven square foot partially underground garage, and the elimination of the original seven hundred square foot detached garage for total development square footage of the property of five thousand six hundred and eight square feet, the relocation of an existing swimming pool, a new one thousand seven hundred and thirty four square foot impermeable pool deck, a new one thousand and four square foot driveway, five hundred and forty three cubic yards of non exempt grading, and including a site planner review nineteen zero nine nine to allow for construction above eighteen feet in height and not to exceed twenty four feet in height for a flat roof. Please note that the SPR findings are different than what you typically see for coastal development permit because the subject application is an administrative plan review which does not incorporate the findings from the LCP. Next slide, please. Here's the proposed site plan. The site plan shows the location of the proposed residence, the new driveway, and the pool relocation. There's been some questions regarding the square footage of the guest house. However, staff has found a nineteen ninety eight building permit allowing the conversion of the existing stables to a guest house. And there's evidence of approved septic tank to accommodate this guest house. In regards to the greenhouse slash hobby room, staff has confirmed that the greenhouse and hobby room were on the nineteen ninety six plot plan residential approval. And the proposed structure um is being reduced in size from the approved seven hundred and twenty square feet to three hundred and twenty square feet. The proposed structure is now being utilized as a pool house slash hobby room, which still remains in accessory use. Both of these structures were approved under the planning verification and are not part of the subject application. Next slide, please. Pictured here is a comparison of the existing footprint and the proposed footprint. The dark gray stripe area indicates the original footprint and the solid lighter gray indicates the proposed footprint. And the white area you see shows you the footprint overlap. As evidence in this diagram, the proposed structure is mainly within the existing building footprint. Next slide, please. The main concerns of the appeal include the following. First, relocating and increasing the height of the second story will block primary views. Staff has reviewed the primary view determinations from the neighboring properties that are on file with the city. It has been determined that the proposed development, based on staff's site visits, evaluations, and story poll placement, would not adversely affect primary protected views. Second, the proposed project would alter the character of the neighborhood due to the height and the location of the second story. The proposed seven hundred and eleven square foot second floor will be twenty four feet in height, which is three feet and ten inches taller than the previously existing residence, which was twenty feet and two inches in height. Will the while the proposed development will be taller than the previous development. However, the other homes in the surrounding neighborhood also measure anywhere from twenty four to twenty eight feet in height. The required finding that the project does not adversely affect bulk and height compared to the surrounding properties entails a consideration of several factors, including the visibility of the residents from public viewing places, the location of the lot, height and massing. Story poles were placed on the property not only to determine the view impacts, but also determine visibility from the street and height in relation to the surrounding properties. It should be noted that the MMC finding does not specify neighborhood character, and it does, the project does prove to be consistent with the bulk and height of the surrounding properties. As demonstrated by the story polls, the project on the site and height are in height and bulk are as compatible with the other development within the adjacent area and has historically been developed with single and two story residence bearing in size and similar orientation to maximize views towards the Pacific Ocean. Another concern was raised regarding privacy. However, privacy is not protected by any specific development standard and is further detailed in the staff report. And lastly, the proposed underground garage will negatively impact the surrounding properties because of an existing underground stream. The proposed project was reviewed by the city's planning department, city public works department, and environmental sustainability department, and was found to be compliant with all applicable codes. The applicant will be required to submit a detailed engineer drainage plans for review and approval. The process will ensure that the proposed project is compatible with all applicable requirements of both state and local law. Next slide, please. Furthermore, in regards to the appeal point stating the garage will negatively impact surrounding properties because of the existing underground stream, this exhibit shows the map stream is not located within the subject property as evidenced by the two blue lines, both to the east and west of the property. Next slide, please. Before you use a map of the subject property in relation to the appellant's properties, the subject property is highlighted in red and the appellant's properties are highlighted in light blue surrounding the subject property. Next slide, please. Staff would also like to draw attention to city council ordinance number four fifty, which addresses the PVD prohibition in disaster areas, specifically the definition of replacement structures, which is that it means any proposed structure cited in the same location and of the same relative size as the previously existing legal structure that was damaged or destroyed by the disaster. The purpose of this ordinance um is to protect excuse me, to protect the victims of the disaster from having primary view corridors established over their properties that would unfairly limit the size and location of the future replacement structures or replacement landscaping damaged or destroyed by the disaster. This is relevant to the subject application because staff has found the proposed structure is within the same relative size as a previously existing residence that was destroyed by the fire and therefore can be review can be approved as proposed. Next slide, please. In summary, staff recommends the adoption of resolution twenty fifty eight approving APR WF number nineteen zero six zero with inclusion of the following changes to the resolution. On page two, section three, finding A, to strike the word not in the second sentence, the sentence should read, no evidence has been presented that the proposed development will brock will block protected primary views as documented by primary view determinations. And also on page four, section four, finding two, should read as the following. The subject application was reviewed by the planning department and city biologists and was determined not to adversely affect environmental resources. This concludes staff's presentation and staff will be available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, um, any questions before we go to the applicant and the uh other people?
Disclosures.
Oh, I'm sorry, disclosures. Steve?
Uh, yeah, I met both the applicant and the appellant uh with Commissioner Mazza a couple of days ago. And I guess I I left with sort of this perspective. I agree with the ability for effort or the applicant to build a like for like property with the ten percent addition. I agree that there should not be new view protections imposed upon them as they're building. However, what I learned was these guys have taken their house and flipped it a hundred and eighty degrees. Where the two story section was over here, now it's over here. And as a result of that, that's changing the views of the neighbors. And I just got, someone's got to explain to me why that's an okay thing to do. I mean, the neighbors have no recourse if their view is blocked because you can't do new view determinations. Yet this applicant can change the positioning of their house to potentially block some views. So someone's got to explain to me why that's a good idea. And so I, that's what I learned when I was there.
David?
Uh, yeah, I went to the site twice, once to meet with the applicant and the other time to meet with the appellants here and walked uh around both uh properties and uh discussed uh things that were all covered in the staff report. Yeah, I, this is a really tough one. I I agree with Steve. The it does not seem to me that the code section that protects the rebuild, if they build on the same site, can actually mean as long as you're on the site, you can do anything with the property because that would make no sense. I could put up a a wall for your second story, and I don't think it's designed to protect that. But on the other hand, I it seems to me that the primary view determination language, you can't get protection if you haven't got occupancy yet. And there's a timing issue here that really troubles me, which could be the end of the ballgame, fair or unfair as it is, but the view is clearly blocked somewhat. But I'm not sure that means that the uh the folks building the house don't have the right to do that.
Commit commissioners, if we could just limit uh discussion about these items until after the the public hearing. Um if you have questions for staff before we get into it, um we can do that, but I'd suggest that we refrain from you know, your thoughts on this in more detail and discussion about these points until after the public said a chance to speak about it.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I visited the property um actually three times, walked around it, uh viewed it from different perspectives. Tried to basically get a view of the uh the relative location of the other properties, the views that are affected uh and the relative height and so forth, which is in the staff report, but it's a little easier to understand when you have it. You know, when you can see it, that that apart from that, that's all.
Chris?
I did have a conversation with both the applicant and the appellant. Um I didn't get a chance to visit the site physically, but I've done, um I've had like virtual views, uh which kind of you know, put things back as they were back in uh August eighteen, so I've got a pretty good sense of the lay of the land. I don't think it really, I learned much more from the um beyond the staff report, but it does give a good perspective. I I see the challenges.
Okay, I uh I viewed the site with Steve and uh met with the owner. And then I also, we both also viewed two adjacent sites. Uh one owned by Terry Lukoff, who we uh visited and discussed the planning reports uh presentation of view determination. And then the site on on Harvester with Terry Lukoff and the owners of that property. I did learn, I did get a very good perspective on view blockage on that. Also, on the the site of the owner, um he did show me a lot next door where there's been extensive grading and gravel and uh uh drainage pipes for some kind of runoff problem, either a stream or it didn't appear to be just rain. And that's all I learned. Okay, uh can we have the appellant? Uh does anybody have any questions, the staff? Are we open? Nope. Okay, uh can we have the uh actually the applicant?
So the applicant, Mander Shofani, has indicated um he has, he's available for questions, but does not have a specific presentation. And then we have the appellate team of Stacy Clooney's Ross, Terry Lukoff, and Robert Brinkman.
Now, let me ask you this. This is an appeal by Ross and Brinkman and I guess Lukoff. Are they the, are they the uh are they the primary uh are they the primary person?
What it sounds like here is the applicant who go first is is uh not gonna speak at first, but they would get a chance to rebut after the appellant has a chance to speak. So let the appellant speak, any other public comments, and then the applicant would then get the uh the chance to rebut if they want to.
Okay, so so even though the appellant is appealing, the applicant is the person being appealed against?
Yeah, the the applicant goes last.
Okay, uh and then the others for three minutes apiece?
Yes.
Okay, uh who's the first appellant?
So the first person speaking is Stacy Clooney's Ross.
If he gets her.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, and you already said you have three minutes.
Uh, yeah, I'm we're splitting it between Terry and Robert and myself, and so I'm gonna take whatever.
You have three minutes each.
This is the uh, this is the appellate?
Oh, I thought we got fifteen minutes.
This is the appellate team.
Yeah, they they get a, they they get the fifteen minutes.
Oh, both, both sides get fifteen minutes?
Yes.
And and can they reserve some time to come back at the end?
Yes, they can.
They can, they can, they can speak after the the rest of the on reserve after the public comments, but then the applicant gets the final rebuttal, if that makes sense.
Well, it sort of doesn't, but just. They understand that?
Got it. You ready? Okay, hi, my name's Stacy Clooney's Ross. I own the property at two nine nine five eight Harvester Road. Um I kind of feel like this is a portion of the evening where I let you know that I'm representing myself in a case without a lawyer because over the last few months, it's kind of turned into just that, a seemingly ridiculous court case. I'm a simple and unsophisticated person. I'm not, I try not to get overly involved in the administrative process that's the city of Malibu and the planning department. I have a few different jobs, work really hard and have very little time for anything else, especially now that I'm in the process of rebuilding multiple homes destroyed by the Woolsey fire. Yes, multiple homes. I guess it's a luxury problem that I own three homes on the same street. I was hoping that one day my adult children would move back and live near me, so I started buying real estate in my neighborhood. I say my neighborhood with extreme passion because I also grew up at two nine nine six oh Harvester Road. I grew up there most of my life. My parents sold it when I was eighteen and six years later, my husband and I bought it in a foreclosure sale. We raised our children there and during that time, we purchased the property directly next door at two nine nine five eight. We happened to be in the permit process for four years before the Woolsey fire and actually received our permits to build on two nine nine five eight right before the fire. I was planning to build my dream house where my husband and I could retire and have a house full of grandchildren visiting. Unfortunately, we lost both of those properties during the Woolsey fire and have started construction on two nine nine five eight. My objection to the Denkers' construction is pretty straightforward. When we saw the story polls go up in front of our new construction, we were shocked at how tall they were to the naked eye. So it made sense when we were told that they were actually six feet higher than the code and that the Dankers were seeking a variance and had flipped their house as well. I immediately started calling, sending emails to find out what my rights were as a neighbor who was having her primary view was blocked by a twenty four foot tall square structure. I thought I was given the proper channels, sent the proper emails, and never received any correspondence back. In fact, I never even received any notification of the Denkers' proposed project, and I actually own three properties adjacent to the Dankers. Notifications were never received at any of those properties. Come to find out, notification was a major issue with many neighbors. If it wasn't for Terry Lukoff who forwarded me his notification, I would never have known what the Dankers were proposing. When we saw the story polls up, we immediately called the Dankers and tried to have a calm, constructive conversation with them, letting them know what our opposition was. That didn't go well. One of the main reasons for trying to get involved early on with this project, immediately after the story polls went up, was to try and address any concerns we had and hopefully reach a resolution with the Dankers before they incurred what I knew would be expenses in connection with the design, architecture, engineering, construction, delays, et cetera. I also hoped that getting involved early I also hoped that getting involved early would prevent the resentment between the neighbors that has obviously occurred. All of us lost our homes and we are all in the same boat. And over the years, we've tried to be as friendly as possible with everyone around us. My dad, who bought property here over 50 years ago, always used to say to me that you want to get along with your neighbors because during a fire, you don't want them flicking embers onto your property. Who knew I would ever see the day? We all know that, we know the Denkers well. Our children are about the same age. We are incredibly sympathetic to them and everyone else that lost their homes. We want the best for everyone. We would love it if everyone could build their dream home. We would just like it if everyone built a code which is developed for a reason. And if you came onto my property, you would see why it needs to be enforced in this case. The flipping of the second story and its added height has blocked our primary view. We had three commissioners on the property last week for the very first time since we've been voicing objections when the story poles first went up. It seemed that they were all in agreement that there was definitely view blockage. It's as simple as that. I believe that you all have the pictures and can see quite clearly how their proposed, proposed structure will block my views. This was not a fire rebuild, and this is very challenging because if we had not, if we had not been delayed by the fire, we would have had view protection because we would have had our certificate of occupancy by now. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, next, uh, next speaker? You have 10 minutes and 53 seconds to go.
Terry Lukoff.
That's probably applicant.
Appellant team, correct.
Hi, uh, this is uh, Terry Lukoff, and I'm the next-door neighbor to the Denkers, and I have lived next to them. They have lived next to me since 1995, and we've been neighbors for that period of time. If, about five years ago, Jennifer said to me, you know, I gotta build this little tough shed for my son to, he can't be in the house. He, he needs his own space. Would, would this bother you? I, I said, no, it, it doesn't bother me. Go, go ahead. It's no problem. And she went ahead. I think she even used my handyman to do part of the work, and she built the shed. We roll forward now to this, and I, like Stacy, saw the story poles go up, and I said, what, wha- what is this? What, what is this? The house was never there. The house was on the other side of the property. There was no view blockage uh going to the west. There, there was no two stories there with a house that was looking straight down on my front yard. There was no imposition of their property onto my property. Their property was very well landscaped and protected, as was mine. And so I did go and talk to them with, with Stacy, and we met with Jennifer Danker on her site. And we said to her what, what our feelings were, and she was extremely forceful in telling us that she had no intention of changing anything that she was doing in working with the neighbors or anything. This was her opportunity for her to put her house right, right in the middle and get the best, best view ever. And, and for everybody else, it, it was really tough luck. It was disheartening for me. It was disheartening for Robert Brinkman, who also would have the hu- house peering right over his house. And, and the fact that they would not work with us, they refused to work with us, and we approached them so early on in the process that it would not have been a big financial burden for them to put the heights back on the side that it was and to rework their house a little bit. But that it was their choice that they were gonna do it my way or, or, or the highway attitude, and that was why we had no choice but to appeal uh, appeal what the city has said. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more, I believe.
Yes, Robert Brinkman?
Also part of the appellate team, right? The appellate team.
Correct.
Uh, yes, hello. My name is Robert Brinkman. I'm a new neighbor. I bought my property, uh, we closed escrow on November 1st, 2018. That was about a week before the fire. So my beautiful new house burned down before I ever had a chance to move in. Um, I've been looking for a house only in the Malibu Park area for two and a half years because I wanted my kids to be able to walk to school. I found my dream house and uh, bought it. I knew the Denkers who were my friends. When the disaster happened, um, that prevented us from moving in, but we're all in the same boat. As Ms. Clooney's Ross said, we all want to rebuild, and we want everybody to have a good home. Our objection to this home is not that the Denkers are rebuilding their house or even that they have a second story. It's that the second story is in the place where they would like to put it, which is not where it used to be originally. It's the highest property in our neighborhood. Um, we share a same driveway, and on the Denker's side, there's a retaining wall and about an eight-foot difference in grade, so the 24-foot structure, uh, in fact, towers about 32 feet over my property. Um, it's clearly visible from Clover Heights, from the end of Filary Heights. It's literally the highest thing around. It looks to me like a medieval fortress, uh, when I look at the uh, at the story poles that show the outline of that second story. As my co-appellants have said, we tried to discuss this uh, with the Denkers. I even asked uh, Jen why they flipped the sec, the house and moved the second story. And her answer to me at that meeting was that they didn't like the view of their own driveway that they would have from the second story. And I thought it's strange that uh, in order to have a more pleasant view, they were willing to ruin the view of several neighbors. Um, my concern about this is that, as was pointed out, this is not a fire rebuild. This is uh, an expansion of the house, and uh, and they're asking for a variance of the code. If these kind of variances get granted easily, then I don't understand what the code is there for. When I asked my architect to move the existing second story that I had on my house a few feet, so I could have a deck on the ocean side, he said, oh, my God, no, you're outside of the envelope. That's never gonna happen, so let's not do that. So I forewent the deck. I lowered my second story, um, instead of 27 feet. I think it's now 25 or 24. And I s- made it smaller. So when I read in the applicant's support letters that we all have second stories and shouldn't be complaining about her second story, it's not comparing apples to apples. It's apples to oranges because none of us are rebuilding anything that wasn't there before, and in my case, even making it smaller and lower. That's not what she's doing. She's going higher and somewhere else. And if this gets approved easily, what are you gonna tell the next applicant who's gonna come and want to block somebody's view? That in that case, it's not okay, but here it was. I feel like the code exists for a reason. Um, of course, variances should be granted in certain cases. I don't believe this is one of them. Thank you.
Okay, do you wish to, you wish to remake, hold your five minutes and 37 seconds? Is that correct? One of the.
I don't, I don't believe there's, there are any other public speakers, uh, Chair Maza. Are there any other public speakers besides the applicant?
No, just the applicant.
Okay, so if they have anything else to say, they should say it now, then the applicant gets the chance to rebut it.
Okay, uh, do either of the three of you have any other comments? Um, on anything?
We can't say it. Oh. We um, we, we were muted, so I don't know if my co-appellants have anything to say. I thought we were gonna rebut if uh, somebody else says some, says something. That's why we, we reserved time.
Oh, Mr. Brinkman, there, you have like rebut any other public speakers, but there are no other public speakers. Um, the applicant is, gets the, you get a rebuttal to any of the ones who speaks in public, and then the applicant gets to rebut last.
Okay, then, then I would like to bring up one more thing because this came up early when uh, Mr. Maza asked about the notification process. As part of our appeal, I'm the one who took over the notification process, so I recertified uh, everybody in that 500-foot circle. And uh, while I was doing that, uh, came across uh, several discrepancies. Uh, one was that uh, you know, Ms. Clooney's Ross had never received a single application, even though she owns three. I actually think it's four lots because two of them sort of belong together uh, at all in this process. So not a single notification, even though by all rights, she should have received multiple ones. My property, even though it was marked on the, the map that uh, was submitted by the original applicant, uh, on the mailing list actually was a different address. So somebody completely switched out 5940 Filary Heights, which is me, the next-door neighbor, with 5940 Clover Heights, which is outside the 500-foot circle. I imagine they got the notifications that I was supposed to get, but I never got those either. Also, there were several other mistakes. A couple of them looked like they were just sales since the fire, but I think there were at least a couple more that were just mistakes of who the owners were. So I think the original notification process was flawed, and it doesn't look like anybody checked uh, and made sure that the information submitted by the applicant was correct.
Can I say one other thing too?
Yes, you have, you have three and, you almost have almost four minutes.
Uh, I saw a couple of letters submitted on behalf of the Denkers and everything, and I just wanted to point out that one of the letters came from a guy and he lives on Point Doom on Cliffside. He would have no indication at all about view blockage to, to the people on Filory Heights. So al- also, the other two letters, one's from a spec builder guy at 59 uh, 44 uh, Filory Heights that built a house that's totally out of character for the neighborhood. It was approved. You guys let him build it. And now, of course, the day he's done building the house, i- it goes up for sale. The other one is a guy who bought a house after the fire burned down loo- looking for a good deal on a lot to, to, to build a house. This is not the sense of the Malibu community. The people who are, we are the people who are appealing this. We are the residents of Malibu Park. We, we, we are the community. We're, we're the people that uh, live there. And, and um, I, I would like the commissioners to consider that in uh, when they're making their decision tonight. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mrs. Ross, do you have anything to say? You want to add?
Yeah.
Okay, you've got 200, 2 minutes and 20 seconds.
We're muted.
They can't see, hello?
We can hear you.
You can hear me? Oh, okay. I, I just wanted to say I find it really interesting. I think it's the first time that I really understand and heard about the fact that the reason that they needed to flip it was not what they had told Robert Brinkman because of they were looking at their driveway, but because of the fact that they are now considering the subterranean an actual story so that their second story would then be a third story. I, I think that was a, a bit interesting to us. Thanks.
Okay, uh, nobody else, which is, none of your group, which is saying anything else, uh, will erase your time. Uh, as you, were you, can I just ask you, were you here at the beginning of this hearing?
Yes.
About notification?
Uh, yes, yes, we were.
Well, you understand you can appeal if there's a problem there. Okay, uh, the appellate or the uh, I don't know what you call them. What?
The applicant.
The applicant. Okay, I'm sorry. Excuse me. The applicant has a certain amount of minutes to go.
Hi, this is Jen Danker. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Um, boy, there's a lot to speak to here, so I'm gonna do my very best to um.
Uh, excuse me one second. Uh, they don't get 15 more minutes. Can we correct the clock?
No, that's correct. They didn't use any of the initial.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm, excuse me. I'm new at this job.
No, you're not.
Go ahead. Uh, we'll give you back your seven seconds.
Thank you. Um, okay, I, just a little bit of background. We bought our home on Filory Heights back in 1995, which both had an amazing ocean view and incredible park-like feeling to the property with so many mature trees. We couldn't see any of our neighbors from most parts on our property. After the fire, I took our surveys from a past remodel and went to Calabasas and went to the fire department desk. I explained to them what everybody was saying, well, you can't rebuild if you don't do this. You can't rebuild if you don't do that. I explained to them, you know, what we had the situation with the pool, the pool house, the driveway, the guest house, the main house. And they said two things. You absolutely cannot keep the turn off the easement into your driveway because it's too sharp for a fire truck, so you need to come in lower on the property, and that driveway needs to be 20 feet wide. They also said, if you want to rebuild your guest house, you need to have enough room for a fire turnaround in your driveway. So I went back, took that information to my architect, and we met um with Richard and did a pre-design meeting. We were in there for a couple of hours. We pulled up view preservation of Terry Lukoff, who, by the way, the reason he's only showing you 180 degrees over the high school field is because once you look towards our property, there's a four-foot retaining wall, a little hill up, there was a six-foot fence and a whole lot of trees. So a westerly view did not exist, but interestingly enough, his wife after the fire, when she hugged me, said, I've always wanted a sunset view. Just a little side note. Um, anyway, um, and when we met with Craig and Stacy, and she knew more about what was on that card than I did about variances and this, that, and the other things, so I think it's really interesting that she says she didn't get one. Um, back to view protection, I'm sorry, I made a lot of notes with all three of them talking. Um, so Stacy and Craig now have 180-degree view of the ocean as all of our mature trees are gone. And when, oh, back to the fire department, I apologize. When we met with Richard, we, we went over everything. We decided to not have to pay the planning fees. We had to keep the same pieces of the puzzle. We looked at the Lukoffs' view preservation. We looked at the fact that Craig and Stacy had been in planning for four years before the fire, and now they're, we're starting to rebuild it. They didn't have a view at all, although it's 180 degrees now. So no matter where our structure was on the property, it's in their view. But oddly, if you look through our story polls to the Brinkmans, half of our second story is gonna have a Brinkman structure in front of it, so that doesn't really work either. Um, so they don't have a view. Uh, we looked at all the surrounding neighbors up on Harvester. We looked at anything that could be a problem and decided that it was feasible to put the second story on the other side of the house where it made sense versus in the middle above our living spaces. Because as I said before, we were trying to take all of the pieces of our puzzle and keep moving them around so we would be within the guidelines to not have to pay permit fees for our fire rebuild. Um, okay, and I'm sure all of you have looked at Google Earth and you've seen all of the photos of what was. And I know those of you that were able to visit my husband at the property while I was back east, saw that we made a board and showed our landscaping, which was amazing pre-fire. Um, so I spoke to Terry. Robert, you know, we're actually looking more at our driveway now than we were before because our main living area is over the driveway. So I'm not sure where that ever came from, but um, and I know the reason he lowered his roof is because he's building modern, and it was at 28 feet. Now it's at 24 because that's the highest it can be for a flat roof, and he's got a flat roof because I've seen his plans. Anyway, that said, we did not want this six-month holdup. The stress that our neighbors have caused us through these false accusations and like craziness have been, i- it's just there are no words, and it's not really a happy place to go back to. But we need to rebuild our home. We really need to rebuild our home, and I'm gonna save the rest of the time if I need to speak again, so thank you.
There's, there's no more time to speak, so if you want to say anything, we'll close after you're done.
I don't have 10 more minutes?
Everyone else has already spoken.
Oh, so that's it. We're done. So I guess that's all I can say.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go back to the, close the public hearing and go back to the planning commission for questions and determine. We'll go back to the, close the public hearing and go back to the planning commission for questions and determination. I have a question for Jessica, just a procedural question. She just said that they didn't want to pay their fees. But this is a over a hundred and ten percent rebuild. Not rebuild, new CDP. So the fees are not waived over a hundred and ten percent, are they?
It's my understanding that this is still processed as an administrative plan review because the square footage is still within the ten percent. And so although they have a site plan review for the construction above eighteen feet in height, the fees are still eligible to be waived.
So the old, the old square footage was what?
I'll confirm what the number is, but I believe it's still within the ten percent of the allowable square footage.
And there's no CDP before the commission. This is only under the municipal code because it's exempt from a CDP as a fire rebuild within ten percent. So that's why the findings for the site plan review are a little bit different than what we normally see here because it's not requiring a coastal development permit for this project.
Okay. Now, can I ask you a question on site plan reviews? Earlier, you mentioned ordinance number four fifty. And it uses the term footprint, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, the question here is not the footprint of the building. Question here is the footprint of the second floor. And that obviously isn't in the same place. So how does that jive with four fifty?
And actually, as I'm reading the definition again, it says means any proposed structure cited in the same location and the same relative size as a previously existing legal structure.
Okay, that word from footprint to location. How does, how does that jive with the location of the second floor, since it's been moved?
So the second floor on this has been moved over. The issue, though, of primary views is what I believe that you're getting at. And Jessica.
I want to get a, can you do it? And then second, I want to get at, then when you do a site plan review, can you block old views? So that, you can answer both same time, I guess.
So the first one's easy, yes, anyone can apply for a site plan review. There are no variances. The word variance kept coming up on this. But just like what Ms. Cloone's Ross applied for when she got the coastal development permit to go from a single-story structure to a two-story structure, it's only a site plan review, so there are no variances here. It's something that's already been applied for and approved in that neighborhood. Now, to your second question about blocking views. Part of the work that we do when anyone applies for a site plan review is we ask for the installation of story polls. And we look at not whether or not you can see this. The code doesn't protect anyone from seeing something. It's the quality of what's on the other side of the building that's being built. And in the case of this project, when it comes to blocking views, it's blue water views. And Jessica can speak to the question about Mr. Lukoff's primary view determination because he was the only one in this neighborhood or immediate neighborhood that spoke out against the project and had a primary view on file. And Jessica was the one who actually did that primary view. And my understanding is that when standing in Mr. Lukoff's protected view area, you have a one hundred and eighty-degree view of blue water, towards the blue water. And I believe that this building is actually behind that one hundred and eighty-degree viewing area. It's to the hill end of that. In order for Mr. Lukoff to see this, you would need to have a two hundred and seventy-degree view, but the code specifically says hundred and eighty. In terms of Ms. Cloone's Ross's view from the structure, the issue that we run into there is that that building, just a quick recap on her project, which was to take the old house, demolish a portion of it, turn that into a, I believe it was a second unit, and then build a new house. And the new house was closer to, I want to say from what I recall, I think it was the southern property line closer to the Dankers. That new house is just that, it's a new house. There was never a structure there prior to that CDP being approved. And the issue we run into is what was hinted at earlier here is that in order to establish your primary view, you go into the house and you look for a living area. And it has been the city's practice to do that only on actually existing homes with certificate of occupancies. So that if we record a view that would affect the future trend of development in front of that house, it's done from an established building, not something that could change during the course of construction. And so this came up about ten years ago on Galahad, where a neighbor tried to ask the commission to protect a view for a house that wasn't there. And to this day, that house still isn't there. That application actually was withdrawn from the city. So the issue we run into is not necessarily because of ordinance four fifty. It is because there isn't a house there yet with the CBO. Where ordinance four fifty would play a role is that I was contacted by a neighbor last week who is a long harvester who did have some view concerns. And we did look at it from what would have been his living room. But we explained ordinance four fifty to him because, you know, that was somebody who did actually have a house and we were able to look at their views by standing on the property. And once we explained that per that ordinance, a new view for preservation couldn't be claimed yet, we have not heard anything back from that neighbor. I don't know if he worked it out with Ms. Danker. But now that was a bit different situation, that got us looking at ordinance four fifty.
Well, let me ask you on that other neighbor. His house was still in existence, is that correct?
No, he did lose his home, but it was framed up and it was a in-kind replacement. So we actually had a living, well, we had the floor of a living room to stand in. And I realize how that may sound like it contradicts what I'm talking about for Ms. Ross. But in that case, there actually was a house there prior to the fire. And, you know, was a slightly different situation. And we also explained to him that this house would fall under that and we could not do a new primary view because we'd be in conflict with the council's ordinance.
So that house had a primary view determination?
No, he did not record one before the fire.
Okay, and then he was precluded from recording one. When you do site plan reviews, when somebody doesn't have a view determination, do you consider the fact that over eighteen feet, blue water views are blocked?
I hope this answers your question. And so if somebody were to call us, let's pretend we weren't in the fire area. If somebody called us in response to story polls, we, because the primary views are complaint-driven, we don't, the city doesn't go out and seek views from persons' properties. If somebody contacts us and asks us to establish their primary view, we let them know that this is a one-time process. Once you establish it, that lives with the life of the structure. If they go forward and record the view with us at that time, then we would apply it to the project that's brought either to the planning commission or if it's something like this that normally would be at a staff level.
With the exception that you would go out and look if it was a public view. It's just private views you don't care.
Ordinance four fifty strictly applies to private views, not public.
Okay, so we're talking catch twenty-two here. You can't claim a view in the fire zone, but you might have one. Now, if this house was not considered a Woolsey fire rebuild, would that make a difference if this house was, say, a ten thousand square footer?
Trevor could confirm this for me, but I think because of the language, I think that would kick it out of the definition of a replacement structure because the size of the home would be about twice of what was there prior to the fire. And I believe that would contradict that exemption.
Yeah, it was massively larger than, it wouldn't be in the same spot or the same relative size, so you wouldn't fall into the protection.
So you couldn't, you could claim a view in that case?
Yeah, they would not, they would not, if you're building something on such a massive scale, then you're not gonna, you wouldn't be able to say it to the same relative size of what was there before. So you wouldn't be under the protection that, of the Woolsey ordinance that prohibits a PV being taken over that property.
Okay, so my concern, and then I'll pass it on, is that I'm gonna hang my hat on the location. When you move a location on the second floor, you're moving it. Anybody else have any comments? Nobody?
I'll go.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. First of all, I want to emphasize something that staff has said, Richard has said. There's always a desire to claim that if anybody wants to do anything over eighteen feet, that they're seeking a variance. Hopefully, everybody on the planning commission knows that's not the case. That eighteen feet is approvable, above eighteen feet is approvable with a site plan review. I'll only say, by the way, since it was mentioned of who's in the neighborhood and who's not, I'm a forty-year resident of Malibu Park as well. So we have two issues. One issue by Mr. Brinkman, Mr. Brinkman's not raising a view issue. He's raising a, a size and, 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 and is a bulk and mass argument. The, the house as planned is virtually identical with the exception of the switching of the sides of the second store from, from the west side to the east side. It's virtually the same size as the house that was burned down. It's a lot smaller than the Clooney Ross's house. And it definitely fits within the neighborhood. I can't see this as being something that is outside of the scope of the local neighborhood. As far as the view issues are concerned, standing on the property, standing in front of the neighbors' homes, it's clear that, to me, that Terry Lukoff's view is a gorgeous view down over the high school and out into the ocean. Even if the one hundred and eighty-degree view, even if this house were not behind the one hundred and eighty-degree line, there would still be a hillside separating, you know, the Danker house is substantially at a higher level. The land is at a higher level than the Lukoff's property. So it wouldn't, it would be blocked largely by the side of the hill. Plus the fact that there, prior to the fire, there was, there was a lot of vegetation in this area. As far as the Clooney Ross's situation is concerned, as near as I can see, putting the house on one side or the other is going to interrupt some claimed view either way. You know, she's either going to lose a little bit of, she's gonna lose part of her view to the left or she's gonna lose part of her view to the right. It doesn't seem to me that there is a difference in that regard. Clearly, I think we all agree that they had a right to rebuild the house they had, which was a two-story house. The fact that this house is, you know, this house is going to be three feet higher or something than the house that was there is, I don't think that's the view issue. The view issue is not that three feet above. The issue is, is having a second story move back and forth. So for those reasons, I'm going to support the staff's recommendation. And I'll pass from there.
Thank you. You gotta mute.
I'm getting lost in the definitions. Like-for-like, in my mind, says like-for-like. It looks like it did before it burnt down. And saying it's virtually the same, when it's not, it's been flipped a hundred and eighty degrees. It's not the same, it's a different house, positioned differently. Now, and again, I'm in favor of the like-for-like rebuild plus ten percent. And I'm also in favor of the process that says you don't get new view protections while all this stuff is burnt down. But to flip a house that was supposed to be a like-for-like thing that potentially could block somebody's view is wrong. I mean, both people got to have a fair process, right? If you're gonna move the house, the other person's gonna have a process to check the view. If he doesn't want to move the house and everything, if they left the house where it was, left the second store where it was, we wouldn't be having this conversation. It would, in my mind, it would be a like-for-like rebuild plus ten percent. Everything's okey-dokey. Once you start moving it around, it loses the definition of like-for-like. Because it's not like-for-like, it's different. It's a hundred and eighty degrees different than what it started out, that's not the same. You're right, it is different. My point is that, my point is that from a view protection issue, it doesn't matter whether it's on one side or the other, you're still gonna have an obstruction of view, right? It's just gonna be here or here. And the second point I want to make is, because it seemed like you were confused about, somehow this was an optional deal, that they moved this because, because they wanted to. Staff report makes it really clear that the reason they had to move this is because the fire department is insisting upon the drive, a twenty-foot-wide driveway with a hammerhead turnaround, which, which forces the garage to be moved away from that area. That's why the initial thought was, well, we could put the garage underneath the second, the house, but that makes it a three-story, so we have to move the second story over to one side in order to avoid the three-story problem. That's how this got going where it was going. It wasn't, it wasn't, oh gee, we get a better view if we do this this way or that way. It was because the fire department insisted on, on, on the hammerhead turnaround and the twenty-foot-wide driveway, which took out the previously existing garage. Jeff, your opening statement agreed with me one hundred percent. Because you said it's different. If it's different, it's not like-for-like. It can't be both, you can't have it both ways, guys. Anytime there's a rebuild, when you go over ten percent, it's different. And that's, and that's why, when you have a situation like this, when you have something which is gonna move the structure around a little bit, that's why you go to administrative plan review. Otherwise, if they put, if they left the house where it was, nobody would have had anything to say about it at all. Exactly right, and they did move the house a little bit, they flipped it a hundred and eighty degrees. That's not a little bit. All right, it's not a little bit, but is it a little bit in terms of the impacts on the views? I have no idea. I don't, I, I think, you know, the problem is, by doing this without having some ability to go out and get a view determination, it's, all of this is pushed over to the side of the guy building the house. He can do what he wants, he can flip it a hundred and eighty degrees. The neighbors have nothing to say about it because they, their rights have been, or their options have been shut off by the fact that you can't do new view determination. Look, I, I don't have a problem with, like I said, rebuilding the house. I don't have the problem with the ten percent increase. It is not a like-for-like rebuild, at least in my mind. That's, I think, I think I understand the words like-for-like.
I want to add something. When I viewed the view from the Harvester house, there was no question in my mind that the view impact was a lot more than where the old guest house, the old second story used to be, because there's houses in front of it. They're still there and have foliage, and they block that view. When they moved it to the left, the view blockage became one hundred percent of the structure, one of the top four or five feet. It was blue water view, gone. The other house was, yeah, a little, where it used to be was, yeah, a little bit of view blockage, but not much. And that was my observation only. Anybody else have a comment, or you guys done?
No.
All right, David. I got David on now.
Richard, go ahead, you're muted.
Thank you very much, Chris, for a while. I'd like to just point out, the reason why staff did not uphold the, or recommend upholding portion of views in this application is because even if this were not a. is because even if this were not a fire rebuild, the Woolsey fire never happened. There still would not be a view issue since. As we mentioned, the PBD from the Lukoffs property demonstrates that this development is out of it. Uh, the Brinkman property has a privacy concern, as Commissioner Jennings brought up, which is outside the scope of our municipal code. And the Ross property, Stacy, uh, Clooney's Ross property, it would need to be developed in order for it to, it developed in a CFO in order for us to uh, bring forth a, a valid argument to the commission that's consistent with what we've done in the past. So a fire or no fire, uh, the issue here is we don't have a primary view impact that we were able to find from the parties that appealed the project.
Can I just ask a quick procedure? All recognized, Dave. Richard, if they drag on this appeal, until the, the people on Harvester finish their house, then they can get a view determination, right? They're done. And that changes everything. So it depends on whether, when this one gets uh, permit, and when the other one gets finished, and that's our problem here. We're playing games with rules that are made for a special area and undefined terms, uh, aren't we?
We shouldn't go too far down the hypothetical road. I mean, the question here is whether you can make the finding that this, you know, that it, whether obstructs or does not obstruct a primary view determination that's in existence right now. That's the finding that's in the site plan review. So if you're not gonna be able to make that finding, you need to be able to identify which, uh, primary view it's ob, it's obstructing.
Or we can find it's not in the same location.
Not a like-for-like rebuild.
That's, that's not a finding. There's only seven findings for the site plan review. And so it has to be one of those. It doesn't fall under the Woolsey fire exception unless there's a primary view that's been obstructed. So there has to be a, a PV at issue that you can't make finding number three, I believe, from the site plan review.
Whatever you're saying, four fifty doesn't count.
It's not coming into, into, it's not coming into an effect, dude. There's no primary view that's that's been established right now. Or that, or that's been requested that would be prevented from, um, by four fifty at this point in time.
I ain't gonna drop that until later. David, you wanna?
Bonnie was about to say something, and I will.
Um, I was just gonna add that, um, it's actually, I just lost my train of thought in that little split second. Sorry about that.
I do that all the time. David, you're on.
I'm gonna try to be brief. We're kind of going all over the place here. And I, you know, maybe staff can opine on what like-for-like means, but I don't, I don't think that's the issue here.
Sorry, that's what I was gonna mention, but go ahead.
No, please.
Sorry about that. So I just wanted to speak to Commissioner Euring's concern about it being, whether it's a like-for-like project, and we're not treating it as a like-for-like. So there's no, um, there's no effort to try to give this project any protection under ordinance four fifty because it's not, it's not being processed as a like-for-like replacement. It's, um,
I mean, the first words in the staff report, in, in the heading of the staff report says, for improvements to modify a like-for-like rebuild.
Right, right. And I want to point out that it says modify a like-for-like rebuild. We tried to be clear that this is a modification to a like-for-like rebuild. We're not trying to um, present this as a like-for-like rebuild precisely because it relocated the second floor. So I just wanted you to understand that that's, there's not an effort here to sell this as a like-for-like, just as Commissioner Jennings was saying, because it is being processed as an administrative plan review with that discretionary site planner view. It's a modification to the like-for-like rebuild.
Hey, so Bonnie, you know, you're playing both ends against the middle. It says like-for-like. If it's not a like-for-like, the words like-for-like shouldn't be in the staff report, I don't think. But then, David, while David's gonna speak, David, you go ahead.
Uh, well, I feel terrible because this is a no-win situation, and John said, you know, it's catch twenty-two, and sometimes you're stuck with legislative language that just, you know, makes you feel bad it's there. And this is one of those times. I, there, this is an issue of, well, the appellants are saying this is an issue of view protection. Uh, it's not. Uh, they don't have, whether we like it or not, and I don't, but whether we like it or not, they're not in a position, Clooney's Ross, to request view protection. They don't have a house. There was a whole discussion of why you need to wait until there's a house built before that permit can be issued. And to Jeff's point, you know, they have a hundred and eighty-degree ocean view, which it didn't have before. That house wasn't even there before. They lived in a house down below, a smaller shed. So this is a new house that they're building. Um, and it has a fabulous ocean view. Whether it's blocked in the middle somewhat by this new structure or blocked on the side, it's gonna be blocked from that position before. It was blocked. There was vegetation. It might not have been that height, but I think we're trying to sort of shoehorn something in that wasn't there, and that we don't have the legal ability, notwithstanding my empathy for them, to say, yeah, you can be protected for that. Uh, I, I, having walked over and looked at the Lukoff situation, the Brinkman situation, I think it's horrible if they didn't get the notices, but unless staff says they were disadvantaged to some degree because that didn't happen, I don't think that's gonna be determinative either. They may be able to appeal this, and you know, maybe the council decides it, that's fine. But I don't think we have information in front of us now that gives us the legal ability to say that the folks who want to build this house, even a hundred and eighty degrees, which I don't think is the right description of what's going on, that they don't have a legal right to do that, because unfortunately or not, I think they do have a legal right to do that. That's it.
Did they avoid the fees, the, the permit fees when they, when they built this house?
It's, it's my understanding that the fees were waived, yes.
Ah, so it was a like-for-like rebuild. Because that's the only way you can get the fees re, right?
They, they processed a planning verification for the house in which the fees were waived, and then a subsequent APR for this, um, for relocating the additional, the addition on the second story.
So let me ask you a question there. It, it says like-for-like. The staff report shows footprint for footprint, and the fees were waived, but in reality, they could build it anywhere they wanted on that property.
No.
No.
Well, it's not, it's not a like-for-like. So why can't they?
It's
What does a footprint have to do if it's not like-for-like? What, what does it have to do with the code?
I'm not sure where you're, how this relates to this application, or if you're asking more of a theoretical question, but pardon?
We have, we have a big analysis. We say it's like-for-like. We have a big analysis. It's on the same footprint. We have all these drawings. And we waive the fees, but then we say it's not like-for-like.
Yeah, there's, I, I, as I said before, this is not being proposed as like-for-like because it's got to change in the second floor.
Okay, but
That was a consideration. The square footage is the other consideration. The fee waiver is not before you. I just want to remind you that there's
Like, like a location is. Like-for-like a location is. Okay, you, you made a big deal about location.
That's because it's on the same building pad, and most of the applications that come before you, there's consideration about whether it's on the same building pad. If it were off the building pad, this is where this is relevant. It would be important, um, if this were in a different site altogether on the property, because that would make it subject to a coastal development permit, because it would be disturbing a whole different part of the site and changing the access and all that stuff. And here, that's not the case. It's on the same building pad. So it's a modification of the like-for-like rebuild that was approved as a planning verification.
Well, okay, I disagree that you can change the location of, of the second floor.
Well, that, that's why it's discretionary. I just want to, I, I don't know if this is gonna make any sense, but that's why it's discretionary, and it's a site planner view and an APR, and, um, as opposed to just a, a, a ministerial planning verification that doesn't have any discretion with it. That's the distinction.
And we have discretion, correct?
Yeah, there's, there's, uh, the site plan review findings need to be made by the planning commission. That's
We have discretion. We can, we want on location.
No, you, 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 what it means is that you, you have to be able to make the findings. Um, it's on page three, starting on page three of the resolution. These are the findings that you need to make, and that you have discretion in determining whether you can make those findings. That's what's before the, the commission tonight.
Anybody else have any comments? Steve?
Yeah, just one, you know, this like-for-like or not, I'll tell you what. I mean, I, as I keep looking through the staff report, the words like-for-like show up all over the place. Okay? So if it's not a like-for-like, why do I keep going back? You, you sort of dance us down a yellow brick road that says it really isn't like-for-like, but it is like-for-like for some of the stuff. So I just have a problem with the definition of what, what this thing really is. I think those people built it under the concept that it was a like-for-like rebuild with a hundred and eighty-degree twist. I agree with the like-for-like. I don't know where the hundred and eighty degrees comes from. I'm done. John?
Okay, anybody else? Chris?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just, I'm this is a tough one, obviously. Um, so when, when I read, okay, just to kind of read through, kind of following Trevor's guidance here, if we look at, uh, condition six, uh, with all applicable, applicable requirements of state and local law, is that what brings in this whole discussion on ordinance four fifty being local law? Just to be clear?
No.
Okay.
Four fifty would come into play under finding number three.
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 So where it's seventeen point oh, oh, four, oh, A seventeen, that deals with primary view. So if you have a primary view determination that would be blocked by the project, then you cannot make that finding.
That, as Richard mentioned, there were no primary views affected by this. There are, are views affected? Yes, but are they protected primary views? I just wanted to make sure the distinction was clear.
And four fifty comes into place if somebody's trying to get a, a primary view determination um, over the property. Nobody
Right.
has, has requested one. There's only one, is my understanding. So if somebody requested one, and then, uh, four fifty would, uh, potentially cause that to be denied, because you can't get a primary view, uh, determination uh, over a Woolsey property that is built in the relative same space. But I don't think we even have an application for another.
So I just, I want to clarify, because four fifty came up a couple of times, and just reading the purpose, it says that it is to protect victims from having a view determination over their property. So four fifty is not relevant here at all.
No, not unless there was somebody who's trying to get a primary view determination over this property.
Over this property. And there, okay, and that's where we get into hypothetical, somebody in the future could want to do that, but we don't have anyone able to do that yet.
Right.
And it would only limit, yeah, okay, then, um, the other piece, I mean, just, just in terms of kind of that hypothetical, I don't think our answer should be one about timing, you know, like John playing down that thing. It should be kind of what's right is what right, is what's right. Um, but I also understand, you know, there's no guarantee of what's gonna go and be built around there to what Richard brought up before. I get the fact that it's, it's the same relative size, but that, you know, the, the location of that large area is obviously what's, what's the problem. I did, I did just want to clarify, there, there is contention between, between rather or not, um, the, the documented view for the Lukoffs is their primary or not. To, how, how, like, do we have an illustration which says this is why the, uh, view is not considered part of their one eighty? You know that it goes into that, is it like one eighty-five degrees? You know, do we have something which says this is exactly where their, um, their view is? Because that's obviously a point of contention.
We do have a primary view determination document, which I believe was included as an attachment to the staff report that shows the five photographs that were taken on the day of the primary view determination. Um, and as Richard mentioned prior in the meeting, I was the one that conducted that primary view determination in twenty seventeen.
Well, and that's, sorry, that's why I bring it up, because photo five in your, your presentation there before you show the tape measure, that is, if that's a hundred and eighty degrees on the right side of the frame of picture five, then we're in the one eighty-degree view. It is, I mean, or, or is this one eighty degrees, one eighty to one ninety-two? I don't know where the start and end is from these photos.
The photo showing the tape measure is just to show the five-foot height limit that we're showing the view at. The actual documentation of the one eighty-degree photos are one through five.
Okay.
The last photo, which I think is six, showing the tape measure, is just showing that that's the height in which the photographs were taken, which is five feet.
Got it. So, so my point then is just to be clear, in photo five, is that the applicant's property that we're looking at in photo five?
I'm, I'm gonna have to go look at it.
Yeah, 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 sorry. No, of course. Because, because that, I mean, I think everyone's, you know, we're trying to zoom in on what's the problem in front of us, and the problem is, do we have a PPD issue? That's all we can talk about. And then I have other questions about that, like, okay, we're, we're focused on the structure. There's a whole nother section of code, you know, related to the landscaping, et cetera, which I think if we don't get this sorted out kind of amicably, this is just gonna be like an ongoing turf war for, for years to come. So, you know, at least if we all can understand exactly what the view determination was, we at least decrease the energy of the situation.
Um, Commissioner Marks, if, if I could just clarify, um, that there are multiple findings for the site planner view that don't have anything to do with um, primary views. So, um, just to be clear, there's, you don't have to focus only on that as far as approving or not approving the project.
Understood. I, uh, from your opinion, though, Bonnie, is there any other aspect which is as much in, in contention as the PVD? Like, are there other aspects which the appellant is really focusing on?
Well, the, the appellants have raised several issues, and I'll, I'll let Richard or Jessica jump in further on this, but, um, view impacts in a, I would say in a general sense are a concern. Mr. Lukoff mentioned in his written statements about, um, the location of his primary view, which Jessica can elaborate on a little more. Um, and then there was also a privacy issue, and then the noticing issue. So there were those multiple things that were, um, brought up and addressed in the, in the staff report.
And the privacy issues, though, we talked before that there is nothing in the code that we can, okay. And then the noticing issue, I did want to come back to that. Um, so maybe if, Jessica, if you have your feedback on what slide five represents, and we can come back to the noticing.
Sure. Um, I'm sorry, are we talking about photo five or slide five?
Sorry, page four, photo five.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to be clear. Yes, um, on that fifth photo, this, that is looking south, um, and from that photo, you cannot see the Dinkar property.
Okay, so the structure there we're looking at is not the applicant there further to the, uh, what, I guess, east or something to the right of that photo?
It, it would be to the right, but that's not pictured. You see foliage, but you don't see any actual structure.
Got it. Okay, so, so that photo clarifies that this, the appellant who is the only one with a PVD does not have the structure of the applicant within their one hundred and eighty-degree protective view.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, and there, okay. All right, um, let me think a bit more. Sorry. Thank you.
Well, while you're waiting, uh, when I look at his primary view determination, it's a one eighty. And you see a swimming pool next to it. Swimming pool's behind the house, correct? So you're talking about the house being in front of his view. I'm looking at pa, page one of the planning department primary view determination. You see the swimming pool on the left? That's behind the house. The house has to be in his view.
Yeah, that, that, that's, because when I look at the imagery from Google Earth, I, I pick up the applicant's house in the one eighty that I'm visualizing kind of off these lines that are drawn from the star on slide one, on picture one. So something doesn't foot, i- i- you know, either we're looking at a smaller slice than one eighty, or the angles were taken differently than oriented in, um, sorry, to just to get everyone on the same page for Jessica Mainly. On what John is pointing out, on the page one of the primary, uh, primary view determination, that red line that's drawn from the star, first off, that star, I think, is a little further from the structure for how the, the photos were taken. But that aside, just looking at that one eighty, to John's point, when you look at this from Earth imagery, you pick up the house. When you look at photo five, you're saying we do not pick up the house. So something is, is, is amiss there.
But the, the, um, the picture with the star is, is kind of a general, um, kind of orientation to show you, uh, approximately where the picture was, the, uh, the primary view was taken and how it was oriented, but the photos themselves are the actual documentation, because those show what is in the view.
So let me ask you this. You, you take a photo, you show a one eighty view determination, you draw a line and say it's the front half of that line, which is a hundred and eighty degrees. But you show some photos that have no orientation to that line, and you're gonna use those to determine the view determination, rather than the granted one hundred, one hundred and eighty degrees. rather than the granted 180 degrees is illuminated on page one. It makes no sense.
I mean, let me, I'm, I'm going to ask a favor, because that, that's where I'm having a big problem. I, I think we don't have a really, like, the documentation is inconsistent. But before we kind of drill on that too much harder, I did just want to throw something out there for an idea, just to see, you might laugh at me, but what the hell. I'm also just thinking through that, the, 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 obviously, the problem came up that we had this third story concept. What was it? Two, two feet of daylighting or something on the basement, so therefore triggered a third story? Could we look at a variance on just allowing that third story to sit on that other end? Then everybody in the community is happy. We have a reason for the variance, because we're protecting a PBD. PBD may or may not be in question, but I just wanted to throw that out there as a concept, because I'm, again, I'm trying to think of this conversation in three, five, seven years, when everyone has moved in their house, everyone's still pissed at each other. Everyone's growing their, their trees and everything, and we're getting all these new, you know, PBDs coming back and forth saying, oh, your trees are blocking my view now, you know? So I just wanted to throw that out there to see if, if that's crazy talk or something which could be something to consider.
Since it no longer matters where you put this house, there's plenty of room for a garage on that lot. If you follow the driveway straight back, you got a perfect spot for a garage. So there's nothing, the fire department required the garage to be underneath the house. They don't require anything other than your driveway.
Would the footprint, Bonnie, still be within like for like definition if the garage were not underneath the structure to John's observation?
If, if, if the house were sited in a different location on the property, then a coastal development permit would be required. And that's, as you know, a more involved process.
It's not the house, the question, it's the garage.
And also, I believe there might be an issue there with the fire department. I believe that's what necessitated the garage being relocated. Jessica is working on an address for the, the address of the home pictured in page five. But I'd like to point out that if you look at page five, that doesn't really actually help the making a finding that this blocks a primary view. Because primary views are evaluated on the portion of the structure that is above 18 feet, that's in the finding. And that's a single story building below 18 feet. And if you were to draw the blue line, the blue water line over, the blue water portion would be below the 18 foot mark. Just looking at, I'm assuming that's a garage on the other side of that SUV there. On, on that photo number five in the PVD.
Yeah, well, we're not talking about Lukovs. You know, we're talking about Ross.
No, we've got to focus on Lukov's view. That's the only protective view.
Okay, well, again, you can see that if you're looking at Lukov's view number five, there's something missing. That's not 180 degrees.
Okay. John?
Yes.
I, I think that, that we're missing the point that, that Richard just tried to make, and that is it's not just a question of can the house be seen from the Lukov property? The question is, does the, the, the house, the portion of the house above 18 feet obstruct visually impressive scenes of the Pacific Ocean offshore islands, Santa Monica Mountains, canyons, valleys, or ravines from the main viewing area? So that it's, it's a different standard than just saying can the structure be seen? And we're only talking about the portion of the structure above 18 feet. So if you remember from the property, the Lukov property sits substantially below.
I got you. I understand.
And so, okay, then I'll start, if you understand.
Well, we talked to Chris's point about the future. This plan, if you had a CDP, and, and staff will have to answer this question, you have to have a CDP, this is an incomplete application, because it has no landscape plan. Zero. So, and that's a requirement. Now, when you're talking about an ACDP, does that eliminate the requirement for a landscape plan?
There is no, there is no CDP at all. See, there's no CDP, there's no ACDP. This is an APR.
Okay, an APR. Richard, is a landscape plan required in an APR? Because the way it stands now in a redwood forest.
If there were to be new landscape proposed, then definitely there would be a landscape plan attached to it. I'm honestly not familiar. I know I put it in here, but that was two weeks ago with what the condition we put in there for Lance. Actually, here it is. We actually conditioned it, condition number 20, that states no new landscaping is proposed as part of this project. My understanding, and this is something the applicant could confirm, but a lot of these fire folks are looking to see if the vegetation they have will just simply regrow once they start watering it.
Well, uh, uh, three of us have been there. You can't grow dirt. Okay, there's a couple bushes in the, on the, on the property line, but the rest is dirt. Okay. If they want to plant something, they have to come back and get an approval for a landscape plan.
Right.
Yes.
Come to us, right?
If it's, if it's like for like replacement of what they had before, then it's a ministerial approval. It's not, it doesn't have to be part of this application.
And you'd have to have documentation, correct?
Right. Yes.
Okay.
I, I'm just not comfortable that we're looking at the 180 degree view. I mean, that, that's where I'm, I'm stuck. And I mean, and I do want to just clarify. So I don't think the structure we're looking at is the, the applicant's property. I think we're looking at the property to the south of the applicant. I don't know the street address there, but it's, it's right, just across the driveway from the applicant. I think the applicants, if, if, if the photographer would have turned a little more to the right, I think they would have picked up the applicant, just like looking at landmarks, you got that trailer sitting there to the, to the east. You've got, you know, the, the SUV in front of a garage due south, and we never pick up, to John's point, the pool to the east. So you know, I, I just, we don't really have, well, I guess the question is, what, what is to be the, what are we supposed to follow? The documented view as stated to be, this is the view that we saw as 180? Or is it what is the, the, the 180 degree angle, you know, determined from standing at that point? Because they don't seem to match.
180 degrees is granted, 90 degrees is photographed.
Um, can I suggest we look at page five? And where the Lukov property is outlined next to the Brinkman property and the other adjacent lot, and maybe staff can walk us through where on the shaded Lukov portion we're, we're focusing, because I think this will clarify whether the Dankers property is the problem or not.
We would want to look at number one, I would assume.
You see where it says Lukov?
Which, which document are you in?
We put it on.
For a while?
Staff report, page five.
Page five, staff report, okay.
Color red, red in the middle there being Dankers property, Lukov being to the right of that.
Are we able to put that up so everyone can look? And can we describe it?
Yes, sorry, I'm getting the slide number. It's slide number eight. I'm sorry, slide number nine. My numbers are off. Sorry about that. There we go.
Yeah, so if you look, if you look at the word, where it says 5940 Fillory Heights, the actual word there, where the zero hits more or less, I think that's the farthest what east or west, whatever direction that is, I guess, west, that the image for photo five got to. To John's point, it looks like a photo to 90 degree angle, not a full 180. And a full 180 picks up this, the applicant's residence in full view, and you can see it cleanly, clearly from, from the image right there. Just, you know, stand at his backyard and look right, and you're looking at their house.
Yeah, it's obvious.
So if we're, if we're required to protect 180 degree view, then the question comes down to Richard's point, which is, does that structure above 18 feet impact the ocean view from the appellant's property? And from what I'm seeing, it does seem to, but we don't really have any other good evidence of that, you know, that, that, that's, that's where I'm having a problem.
Richard, does, does the pictures define what's protected?
So the address of that home is 5940 Fillory Heights. You are looking at that SUV in the parking lot and the garage there, I believe that to be Brinkman's. And the reason why I say that is because if you look at the slide in front of you where you see 5938, you can see a, like an asphalt area or some, something hardscaped. And if you look between the, the fence there and that SUV, you see that hardscape and then leading to a, a building. And that seems to match up with what you see in that photo and then also on our city GIS. I have a feeling that there's an error in this primary view determination. And that error actually is on the first page. I think that that 180 degrees actually needs to be turned 90 degrees to the north.
Right.
And
It, it may have to be, but it wasn't. And if you look at the, this slide, and you look at Lukov's house, you can see that white square in the middle of his house. It must have been a, a skylight or something. That's his house. There's no question about it. And if you go directly to the right as you're facing the ocean, you hit whatever that word is under heights. I mean, it's half of the lot is in front of his house.
So to get to Trevor's point, the actual documentation of the primary view are the photographs, not page one. And page one, if you want page one to match up with the actual documentation, which are the photographs, you would need to turn that to the left so that the, it's now north-south. Because if you look, photo five actually ends up at the, that circular feature there appears in photo five that we see in that other picture plus. The other way you could tell something's off here is if you were to stand where that star is, and you turn and look towards Dankers property, you'd also be looking right into Lukov's house. That's in that nook right there. So you wouldn't actually have a view.
Right. That's what I was saying, I, the, she, the, the photo has the tape measure laying on the floor. I think that was also to mark where the person stood. So the, the star is not in the right plot, place on that image. The actual photos were taken further south from there. And, and I, I, I mean, from what I'm seeing in terms of just kind of how the contours, the land is and everything, if we're protecting the 180 degree view defined by the red line on slide one of the PVD documentation, it looks like the structure being located further, having the, the, the higher second floor of the applicant's structure being on the side of the property nearest the appellant, specifically Lukov, that does seem like it's impacting view more than if we're on the other end.
Yeah, and I would, I'd like to point out on page one, the second paragraph, it says the view from this location on the property as follows. The diagram below corresponds with the photographs to the east, from east to west. The nature of the view consists of the Pacific Ocean. Well, it doesn't correspond. Okay, so where does it say in the code, if you make an error, the photographs count and not the 180 degrees?
I would just like to point out that we're going down a dangerous path here, because photos one and two, or, or mainly photo one and two, I guess, is two, those are views that are coming off of the horizontal line there towards the right, right-hand side of the page. And if we were to redo this and actually shift this, this orientation is wrong on page one. And if we did that orientation, I have a feeling that we would actually end up taking away a lot of Mr. Lukov's views. Like I said, the actual documentation that we would use in the future, and what we use are photographs, and not necessarily just the, the purpose of page one is really just kind of an overview. But what is actually protected are the photographs, because these would be the photographs we would use if, say, that home beyond the trailer there in photograph one came in and wanted to raise, say that was a single story, and they wanted to go two-story, or build somewhere on their property in that blue water view. We would actually look at these photos to make that assessment. No such assessment could be done with the photo, that general overlay photo on page one.
Do you, do you admit that those are not 180 degrees?
I don't, I would assume that the photos one through five are 180 degree views, but I definitely would admit that I believe page one, based off what I'm seeing on our city GIS, I believe that half circle and line need to be turned to the, turned to the left so that they're actually running what I would believe to be north and south, not east and west in this photo.
But then a quick question, Richard, aren't we then protecting a view of the hills, which isn't protected? I thought we only protect the blue water views.
That, that's another important thing to keep in mind with respect primary views. When a primary, when, when a property owner contacts staff for a primary view determination, sometimes it's in response to a specific project, but other times it's just more in general, somebody wants to just get it on the record that they want this view to be their protected view. And based on the code, as you know, it's 180 degrees that's protected as opposed to everything that you could possibly see. So a property owner makes that selection when staff goes out to the site. And so the photographs were taken based on which direction Mr. Lukov was concerned about at the time that his primary view was documented in the photographs. So I, I wasn't there, Jessica was there. But the, a, a property owner can choose strategically what they feel like is the most advantageous thing to protect. For example, if someone's got a beautiful view of the ocean, but there's no, you know, the, it looks out over a, you know, a vertical cliff or something where nobody's ever going to build, you might want to choose something that is to be protected, that is over an area where somebody is going to build, or that has a view. So it may be that the view was oriented in the way reflected in the photographs, because there were already obstructions to the, I'll just call it the right for clarity. And that's why they're oriented that way. The, the initial thing on page one may be off, as Richard mentioned, but the view selection in this case, Jessica, feel free to jump in if you want to add anything, is chosen based on what the property owner wants to protect when the, when the photos are taken. So it may not, the, all of that is just to say that it may not have taken the Dankers property into consideration at all if there was no view there in the first place.
Right, and maybe they had that choice to pick what, what angle they prefer. To your example, I'm never going to get that ocean view blocked, so I'm going to protect this cliffside view, whatever it is. They might have chosen that.
I understand that. And, and, but if you look at the pictures, one through five, you can see the same bush in one, two, three, four, and you can see the same path in two, three, four, and five. So it's obviously no more than 90 degrees. Would somebody protect, get, get 180 degree view protection and not protect the other 90?
Before Jessica explains what it was that she did out there in 2017, I just wanted to add one other point to what Bonnie was saying. You cannot pick a PVD spot willy-nilly on your property. The code has very specific criteria that it has to be a, a ground level living space. Somewhere where you entertain folks, it couldn't be a bedroom or a bathroom or a hallway window. And also, if in the case of this one was taken from outside the home, they're also only limited to 10 feet from the
It's got a tape measure showing that, and the height at which it shot on page seven. Photo reference seven show that.
Yes, so I always just wanted to add on to what Bonnie was saying about how folks pick their PVD point, and I just wanted to further add that there may be a reason why the PVD wasn't taken from, say, uh, there may be a reason why the P V D wasn't taken from, say, a different spot, which in that aerial photo may appear to have a better view. Uh, that different spot may not qualify it as a ground level main living area.
No, yeah, I understand. You stand in that one spot five, six feet, five feet up and you do a one eighty, but in this case there's only a ninety. So the other half of it are either missing photographs or photographs that were never taken, but it's only ninety degrees. And it, and it contradicts, and that ninety degrees happens to represent half of what's shown on photograph on on the, the aerial view. It's, it's an error.
Well, well, I, I, I've got another question. I know Jessica does want to respond. I think Bonnie was asking for that, but I, but just, just to clarify. So let's but if we look at two scenarios, Richard, to your point, let's say that the, the view, the line is oriented incorrectly and it should be more, um, uh, away from the, the, the applicant property. Then we have no discussion because their, their construction doesn't hit the, the view determination. If it's not, if it is within the one eighty that, that this, this applicant or the appellant has the right to, then what is the question before us? Just it, it, we, can we still make finding three? Is that correct? That's all we'd be discussing then? You're on mute. Still.
I'm muted.
Got it. Finding three talks about the fact that the project is not obstructed visually. These are, this is the language out of the code. Visually impressive scenes of the Pacific Ocean offshore islands, Santa Monica mountains, canyons, valleys, olivines from the main viewing area of the affected principal residence. Okay. So we don't protect all views. We protect those visually impressive scenes of the ocean or the ravines and so on. And we don't protect anything that's up to eighteen feet, right? We only look at what's above eighteen feet and we don't protect views of the sky. Okay. So within those limitations, that's, that's what you're, what you're asking. You say, okay, assuming that everything with the, the, Mr. Lukov's position, uh, or the, 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 what, what he has claimed is correct, that, that the, the line should run perfectly east and west. Then the question is given the difference in altitude between the two pieces of property and given what the eighteen feet of the house would block, assuming it could be seen. Then the question is would the second story, the portion above eighteen feet block anything other than the sky?
Exactly. And then, and then my point is that if it does, then the, then the code would require us to cite that in such a way to minimize that view impact. They still can bill to per the site plan review, but we'd need to minimize that would be part of our requirement, right?
No, because, because we don't protect sky.
Well, okay, um, let me see. We do protect the impressive scenes of the Pacific Ocean. So that, that impressive, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. The, the question would be, does the second story, the portion over eighteen feet block an impressive scene of the ocean or the offshore islands or the canyons and so on?
Yeah. And, and my point is that what, if, if, if we grant that they're allowed to build more higher than eighteen feet somewhere on the property, does, does our discretion allow us to say this would be rejected because the, um, sighting of that higher, um, you know, structure is closer, therefore more visually instruct, uh, obstructive to the impressive views. It needs to be moved further away to protect this applicant's rights. Is that really what our discretion is? I mean, we still got to figure out where the line is supposed to be, but I want to know what decision we're going to make once we have that information.
My position would be if you assume the line is wherever Mr. Lukov says it should be. The question simply becomes what impressive view would be obstructed by the second story and the second story alone of the house as designed? If it doesn't obstruct an, an impressive view of some sort, and that doesn't include sky, then finding three can be made.
Okay. I, I personally don't know that we have enough information to make that decision, but I'll, I'll, uh, sit back for a minute.
Hey, uh, David?
Yeah, just to further complicate it, um, in terms of the photos on page five of the staff report, the report says the property never had a west-facing view of the ocean based on the photographs which were date stamped, sent to the applicant and kept on file at the city. And then it goes into Mr. Lukov submitted a copy of the official P V D, uh, which includes the photograph with his appeal letter. Staff's uncertain why he believes he had a west-facing view at all. Um, and it, based on that, which I don't know if they're talking about these photos or other photos, but staff had concluded that the view that you're talking about, uh, Chris, wasn't protected.
Right. Or even Terry would say it didn't exist is what you could read that as.
Yes.
But we don't have those photos unless Jessica can tell us which one they are. Cause we don't have any west-facing photos.
So go ahead, Bonnie.
Yeah.
Um, I was, I don't know if this will help or not, because I have not done this in the context of a Zoom meeting with the planning commission, but I was going to, um, show you an aerial photo, um, that's in three dimensions that might help, um, explain why the view photos are oriented the way they are. Um, Alex, if you could walk me through this, I'm just going to hit share screen and see if that works.
Yes. Press the middle of it. Not the right side. And you're muted.
Okay. Can everybody see this?
Yeah. Yes.
Um, okay. So this is Mr. Lukov's house and, um, unfortunately the green pin is it's oriented north, south. So north is to the top of the screen. Um, and the, the primary view photo was taken, um,
Where the green pin is?
Well, it was taken further back from, so if you look at the green pin, if you go further north or yeah, right where Bonnie's little hand.
Right where, yeah. So it, it must've been taken within ten feet of the residence. So, um, it's oriented in this direction. Uh, following the topography. So that's, you can see if you went this way, um, and all of the, I can zoom in a little bit. I think. But the, all of the windows and everything are oriented this way on the house. So that's, that's I suspect why the view is oriented like this unless like this over here where the Dinkers house is.
And we, we know that the elevation difference from five nine three six to five nine three eight, five nine three six is eight to 10 feet higher. That was already established. So, I mean, it's higher and it has other growth. So that's why you're saying he probably oriented that protection more to like the right of your, uh, image here.
Right. Yes, I think so. Unless it's, remember something different.
No, that's correct. And at the time of the primary view determination, um, as it was selected, so the homeowner is present selecting that view. Um, after staff has taken the photographs, um, you show the photographs to the homeowner to confirm that's the view that they want to preserve. Um, they look at the photos, confirm that, and then staff goes back to, to provide or to fill out all this documentation and provide it to the homeowner. So they do look at and select the view and look at all of the photos to confirm that is the view that they are wanting to preserve.
And, and just to throw another hypothetical, hypothetically, Mr. Lukov could have stood there with you and said, you know what? I'm going to face more to the west. And because someday I hope that view picks up. I mean, that, that's kind of nonsensical. That, that's not something which would have been done because it would have been picking up a few trees.
Correct. And I've conducted quite a few primary view determinations and, um, typically a homeowner may ask you to, to do a couple and see which one they like better before they make the final selection. Um, so that's actually very common, but in, in conducting this, the, the visually impressive scenes, like we were mentioning earlier in the meeting, is of the the Pacific Ocean facing south. So that was the primary area that Mr. Lukov wanted to capture.
And did you capture any documentation of the west-facing view for reference? Maybe add it to the record?
I would have to look. I, I don't believe. So the photos that we keep on record are the, these five photos here.
Okay.
Okay. Now, let me ask you a question though. You'll see directly to the right of Lukov's house, two houses. Should have been captured in those views. And they don't seem to be there.
Yeah, the photos don't really pick up a one eighty, but they don't go as far west.
Didn't pick up a ninety.
Yeah.
The house, the house right here. Well, I can't use my pointer, but the house directly next to that V is
You can.
You can't see that. And
In photo one beyond the trailer.
Yeah.
You can, you can see two houses beyond the trailer in photo one.
Well, where could the trailer possibly be?
I don't understand your question.
Well, the, the one, the one you see, the gray house you see is a modern house. And the, the trailer has no place to park. But anyway, we're talking about less than a ninety degree view. That's why.
I, I, I don't believe that it's less than ninety degrees. I believe that it's, it's just difficult when you're trying to patch together photos, um, after the fact, and you're not standing on the property. But that's why I wanted to show, share this, um, aerial view to kind of give you a, that perspective. Um, but I will go back to my regular view unless
But actually, yeah, leave, leave, that's, that's really good. Go, go ahead.
Bonnie, I think, I think you should leave. Isn't the trailer that we're looking at in photo one, the trailer right there where you're go up a little bit, right?
I would assume so, but it's hard to say if it's parked in exactly the same place.
Well, but if you look to the right of it, there are two houses, which could well be the two houses in photo one.
Yes.
Oh, that trailer would be Lukov's trailer then. We can ask him if it's his trailer. Well, well, let's assume it's Lukov's trailer.
Yeah, I'm not sure what your sense makes.
Well, that would show you whether it's, that's where it is or not.
Well, this, this actually, I should have also mentioned this photo that, um, aerial photo is from, um, March twenty-third of twenty seventeen. I'm not sure what date the primary view was taken, but, um, it's, I did try to find one in the same year.
March second, twenty seventeen.
Oh, well, that's
Pretty close.
And I do think we should add to this, the testimony from Mr. Brinkman who confirmed that the Danker house sits um, at a higher elevation than his home there at fifty nine forty. And that also would reinforce why the view did not go more towards the west because going more towards the west would lead to an uphill slope and further just topography would impact any views. So the, the views in those photos were taken of like Bonnie mentioned, the lowest topography to maximize the view as, as I mentioned, Brinkman indicated that the Danker property is at a higher elevation. So if you continue that line in uh, photo five, you're going to end up running into earth and then house on top of it.
Yeah, just, just thinking about the conversation that most likely happened there, um, you know, ten feet from the house with a five-foot ruler standing up and Jessica with a, a camera in her hand. It was probably like, well, I can't see through my neighbor's trees and, and all that. So I really want to make sure that this kind of due south more towards the west. I, I still think it's maybe a nine, maybe sixty-five to a ninety degree slice. But that really represented the best view at the time. I don't know that, that, um, the, the fact that now a view is opened up more to the east is really, I'm sorry, more to the west is really relevant to the P V D because it wasn't the state at the time the view was determined.
Right. I mean, I this is just speculation, but if we take as an example, if the line starts in the right-hand corner of where the two blue lines meet up by the trees, keep going up, up to the top there. Now keep going, keep going. Yeah. No, come to the right. All the way right. If you drew a line from there and then come down just exactly what you just did. It seems to me that he would have said, here's the view I want to protect because that's where he has the sort of direct sight line out without higher ground and houses blocking it. So from that right corner down to where the, the hand is now, I would think that would be the view at a hundred and eighty degrees. And it would not implicate what we're talking about now with the Danker house.
Right. And that, that logically makes sense. At the time the view was determined in twenty seventeen, without a foresight of if a fire would come through, that was probably what was, you know, the discussion and focus.
Right. And also people are, are choosing their primary views, not only with homes in mind, but also landscaping so that if trees grow into their views, they can then go through the view, um, restoration or preservation process and, and try to get that rectified.
I, I did have another question. The, the noticing issue, what, 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 how does that change this discussion? Um, in terms of what additional rights the appellants have, having not been properly noticed, if not noticed?
Sure.
That would be the purpose of this hearing. If they felt that they were, uh, improperly noticed uh, over the, this A P R and site plan review at the, the staff level, the first bite at the apple, uh, they have an opportunity to then make their grievances heard. And so that's what we are here for today. So the notice that was used for this meeting would be the notices that were prepared by the appellants. So ideally the appellants were in the loop on this particular meeting.
Okay. So the noticing around this meeting is what cures any, many past situation?
True, Trevor?
Sure. If, if, if there's actual notice here and, and they've shown up, then that would cure any problem that, that there would be between any kind of noticing issue. If there is a noticing issue, a few things been brought up today that we looked at by staff. If there was some problem, then we'll, we'll go deal with it. But
Well, doesn't that preclude their right to, uh, have the time to analyze this? I mean, there's an original notice for a reason.
But there was a twenty-one day notice associated with the original A P R that, um, people are, are contending that they didn't receive or that wasn't properly, um, made, but, um, I believe that part of the preparation for this appeal report was to check and see if we had any returned mailers and things like that. And I believe we found that everybody's addresses were on the list and that, um, there weren't returned mailers in there. Richard, um, and Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong. But, um, yeah, there was a twenty, twenty-one day notice associated with the original site plan review for the A P R. And then in conjunction with this appeal hearing, there's another twenty-one day notice associated with, um, this appeal hearing. So it's the equivalent notice.
I want to get to
Aren't they, aren't they? Doesn't the code say they have to get both notices? And don't they have an appeal if they don't?
There's the, 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 the notice provisions are statutory, but in this case, we're still applying. I wouldn't get too far down this road because if there is some problem, we'll deal with any, any noticing issue. Um, and then they have the, the opportunity to cure it before an appeal to counsel in this case too. So.
They would appeal to counsel and not us?
If, if they want, yeah, if there's a problem here, you know, with, with the noticing, then it has to be, has to be noticed for the council as well. So everyone here, not the point of noticing is to get everyone aware that what's, is what going on here. And you come here and you present evidence to the, the council, the commission and be heard.
Yeah. My question is if for this hearing, there's a certain required notice and it wasn't fulfilled.
It was, it was, Commissioner Mazzata or Chairman Mazzata, it was fulfilled because, um, the, the appellants for this hearing, the appellants provided the notice data that we used in order to notice the hearing. And we consulted with them and
For our hearing, they had to go to the file and find out what was in there.
Well, they can either use the data that's in there. And I believe one of the appellants said that he, he checked it himself. Or they can produce their own, but in either case, they have to certify that the data is accurate.
Yeah. All, all, all of the appellants had actual notice since they've actually appeared and they did file their, they filed their appeal.
So the statute that says they have to get this notice and then that notice doesn't count.
It, it's been satisfied is what Trevor's saying.
Okay. So why give the first notice?
Because John, you try to give people, you try to give everybody as much notice as you can, but if having, you know, if you want to say, I didn't receive notice, but here's my objection, then, then you've, you've waived the, the objection. And then you show up at the hearing, say, well, I did, but, but everybody admits that they got notice of this hearing. So there's no issue there. The only question is, I guess you could make an argument that, well, I would have made a better objection if I'd had more time because I didn't get enough notice. But I think that, that, that is is sort of waived by the objection that you do file.
Yeah, where they could
My approach.
Yeah, they could have argued that there wasn't enough time to kind of discuss the situation with the applicant. That would be the only other counter argument I could see. Yeah.
Yeah, that would be my, you know, if I got an earlier notice, I maybe go to stand down with the applicant before they
Yeah, that would be mine, you know, if I got an earlier notice, I maybe go to stand down with the applicant before they started going through this whole process and maybe. Avoided this whole thing, but.
Sounds like attempts were made at that even before hearing started with the story pole installation.
So what do you think? Okay, Steve, somebody want to make a, a motion? Dave?
Uh, I would move that we adopt the. Staff recommendation denying the appeal, and I do that with a heavy heart because I hate putting. Any kind of objects in front of anybody's view, but I see here that we have very little choice other than to do that.
I'm going to second the motion.
Okay, I'm gonna, my opinion is, and I'm gonna vote last, but. Uh, I think that a location is an important matter. We have to look at the whole situation. And I'm not going to be in favor of that, but uh, anybody, anybody else have any comments before we call a vote?
Um, I just wanted to, to point out that I think it, it wasn't clear to me at the start of this really what view was, that was being protected. Um, I think now that we've had a good discussion, Bonnie, I don't know how best we could capture that kind of. Topography image that you had, but I think that should be part of the record because for me, that was, that, that helped me determine kind of. What was the intent of that VPD when it was submitted? And um I, I think now I have a better understanding of that to influence my vote.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment, and that is. That we don't want to start another fight, and I want to make it absolutely clear in the resolution that. No new foliage can be placed on this property without preparing before us for the landscape.
It's there.
Well, it doesn't say who's going to prove it and how they're going to do it.
I didn't say absolutely, huh?
Because, you know, what happens? Seen a thousand times, in comes the Ficus hedge or in comes the Redwood Forest. Staff doesn't know about it, and then they go, oh, well, it's done.
What do you want to, it says a detailed landscaping plan should be submitted for review and approval prior to any planting. How would you like to amend that?
Add by the planning commission.
No, come on.
No, yes, this is going to be the big argument.
John, did you see that, that aerial view and all those trees that?
And, and they never got a landscape plan to begin with. So what I'm saying. I've seen a million times on point two where. It's not exactly staff's first priority to go check and see what's growing. Have you ever had a landscape plan come back to us? I don't remember one.
Well, another way to put it is that, is that landscape plan appealable in any form or just subject to staff review and approval?
That's why I wanted to come to us.
I thought the landscape, there was no landscape plan and landscaping was prohibited.
Uh, page seven of eleven in biology to Commissioner Wild's point, there is the call out that that, that there needs to be a detailed landscape plan. To be submitted for review and approval. Uh, just, I'm trying to clarify by whom.
So the condition requires that before they just plant anything, that they must submit a landscape plan for review and approval. So that would go through our normal process. Um. Fire rebuilds are entitled to landscaping is, is one of the things that you can replace like for like. And we go through the same process to try to determine what was there lawfully. Um which I'll admit is tricky with landscaping, but that is um, that is the process for fire rebuilds. If they wanted something completely new, then it would be not a, a like-for-like replacement, then it would be um an APR.
Okay, and we don't have any documentation of prior landscaping, so uh. And this house was approved in what eighty-eight or ninety-eight or something? So there never was landscape plan, so. That's why with the neighbors concerned about their views. Especially in this case where we've denied people view protection. I'd like to have that in, in the resolution.
John, let me suggest, you're asking David if he will accept that. If he will accept it, I won't accept it as a secondor, but if he will accept it. Um, then, then you can go forward if he gets another second. If, if he doesn't accept it, you can simply offer it as an amendment. You can, you can say, you know, I want this as part of the deal. You can just, it doesn't have to be a friendly amendment.
But I want to be careful with the, with the amendment too, because, you know, this is not something with the, the planning commission doesn't come in and force, you know. Conditions and, and, and U S being done on a property.
Trevor, it's a requirement of the LCP to have a completed file. And that is specified as including a landscape.
It, it doesn't say that the city, that the planning commission has to review it.
CDP, it has to be in the land, in the CDP.
As part of our review.
Make a motion. That we put the word planning commission in whatever somebody just read me, that David just read. The words planning commission. Do I have a second? So you're gonna, you're gonna.
I'd second that.
Yeah. Well, can we?
Could we be specific? Which condition are we talking about here and what change are we talking about specifically?
So it's condition eighteen on page seven eleven of the resolution, and John is just saying that that language related to the uh. Uh submitted for approval by the planning commission would be on that one, just so there's an appeal process for the neighbors.
Right, I have a feeling that they'll never know it. It'll get approved by somebody down at City Hall. They'll never know what happened, and then we'll come moon nursery and their view will be gone.
If they have, if they, if they have the um, the, the notice, the, the bipartisan notice that Bonnie was talking about earlier. They get notice of a landscaping plan and any action by the staff by, in, anywhere in our municipal code, any action by staff is appealable, so.
Yeah, this is a, we're talking about a ministerial condition here. I mean, we, the, the, I mean, what would be coming for the planning committee? Planning commission has jurisdiction over certain types of approvals, so if you want to prohibit landscaping. It's already in there that's prohibited unless it goes through the normal process that's required by the city for approval of landscape.
I have a lot of neighbors who have built houses and changed their landscaping. I have never once received anything from the city planning department saying. We're going to approve this landscape plan. Never once.
If it's not law, if it's not lawfully put in, then it would, it would just have to be removed. It's a code enforcement.
Notice landscape changes.
What, Bonnie, you mentioned something, they can do a like-for-like landscaping plan. What the hell does that mean?
That means that if you had um lawfully established landscaping that you lost in the fire, that you can. Replace that the same way you can replace your lawfully established home, which is through the planning verification process. So when somebody proposes to replace landscaping, we go back through their um prior permits. Like in this case, we would look at the um coastal commission prior approval and things like that to see if there was a landscape plan. So that we could determine what was there lawfully, and that is the limit of what they could put back.
Was, if it wasn't, if there wasn't a, a prior landscape plan, can they just put back what they had?
It requires a lot of research to figure out what was there um and what was allowed to be there, that, and it is challenging.
But I mean, can they go back and replace what they had? Period. Just say, is a like-for-like, I would have put what I had before back in there. Can they do that?
It, it has, we have to determine that it was allowed to be there in the first place.
So if it was lawfully established, then it, it could be replaced.
Yeah, but it wasn't in this case, so.
Is there a particular, may this particular landscaping you're concerned about?
I am concerned about the fact that as it stands now. You could put in trees that grow to sixty feet. Okay, now, they may go in at five feet, but they could go to sixty feet, okay? When we do landscape plans, we put in requirements. This tree may not grow over a certain height. Every landscape after the fact thing I've seen is a little sheet of paper by Dave Crawford that goes, okay, and that's it. I don't see, I don't see any hearings. I don't see any, how anybody's going to know that's going to happen. Once it's in the ground, it's done, okay? So all I want us to do is. Is, is review it when it comes out because what we're talking about is view blockage. We've denied one of the applicants, the fact that he can't get a view blockage ordinance or a thingy. Uh, what, what do they call it? And we're also now going to say, well, maybe the city will tell you about it, maybe they won't.
Can I just, can I just point out that it says with a potential to exceed six feet? Anything with a potential to, not, not that it'll be sixty feet, but if they plant something that can grow more than six feet, has to be approved.
Has to be approved by the commission.
That, we can't make up, we, we can't make open, the thing is, we can't make up an approval. I mean, if you want to report if they're going to do something.
Let me go back to Bonnie. Bonnie, if they had prior plants in there. That, whatever, and those plants had the potential to grow over six feet, can they replace it with those same plants?
If, if they were lawfully established.
Yeah, which. There's your, that, you know, I'm.
They know, Bonnie, if they.
They're, they're, they were allowed, if they were lawfully established, then they're allowed to have those. And the fact that they burned down is a loss that they are allowed to replace. If it were lawfully established, that's all I can tell you.
If the clause that David read doesn't mean anything then, or may not mean anything. Right?
Let me ask you this.
It does, it still requires a landscape plan. It still requires a landscape plan, but a landscape plan is an administrative plan review. And we don't provide notice for those unless there's a site plan review. And there wouldn't be a site plan review unless there was um something involving. You know, a, a reduction in setback or a height over eighteen feet.
Okay, so all I'm asking is we review it because this is.
But the problem is the planning commission, you can't just keep jurisdiction over a, a project to have it keep coming back as part of the permit. You establish.
Project, they filed a plan that is not a complete CDP, okay?
There's no CDP.
All the time, we put restrictions in, you gotta come back. If you don't have a complete file, we do it all the time. We're not establishing anything new, okay? And in this particular case, we've got a catch twenty-two going on where the neighbors aren't uh, uh protected, okay? So they at least need to weigh in on what goes on that property. And. I know, I, I've been around long enough to know that if you get the right guy at the counter and he stamps something. Then you, Trevor, will tell the neighbors, you're screwed, whatever he stamp is, okay?
I mean, here's the, the problem is that you're maintaining, that you're saying that you, they, they can't build anything, they're all a further approval. We can't.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that. They are not getting permission on this.
Yes, it's clear they don't have any, do you want to just cut out the, the back end of that one and just say, this is not authorizing any landscaping, period?
Period. That's what it says.
Yeah, then we could just remove the second part. That's confusing here of section of number eighteen. And it just says, no new landscaping is proposed to the project, therefore none is approved, period, full stop.
Okay, and then how do I know, I want to know what the process is next, okay?
They, they are the same as anybody else that wants to put landscaping.
Build a house and leave a dirt yard, okay? So somebody's going to go walking into the city at some point and say, hey, I want to do this. Okay, and, and there is no. Review by the neighbors involved. There is none.
Trevor, how do I get from your recommendation to Bonnie's suggestion that says they can build like, put good and like-for-like landscaping?
Because they don't have a road for landscaping. You can't get there. Okay, they never filed an application for it.
With all due respect, Commissioner Mazza, we haven't done that research yet, and we don't know what landscaping they have or haven't had approved yet. So I mean, that's part of the research we'll do.
I didn't see any landscaping plan in their last CDP. Okay?
Pardon?
The last time they came in there, they had their greenhouse turned into a residence.
Well, an accessory structure doesn't necessitate a landscape plan. It's.
I know, there was none. That's what I'm saying.
Bonnie, why, why is there no landscape plan required for this, in this case? Maybe that's an easier.
Applicants, because landscaping has been um. Fire rebuilds have been processed in the parts that people can pull together as they get things done, like people have been. Doing their um, for example, their uh, their home replacement in one application. And then they may come with their swimming pool replacement and a separate application. It helps them to get things moving. And it's, it's a, it's an efficiency, so um landscaping is generally something that people have done later in the process. So that it doesn't slow down. I think it's also a matter of expense because, you know, you've got to hire a landscape designer and all that stuff.
This is why the coastal commission said you cannot have a complete file without that. Because people can skip review. A normal CDP, we review the landscape plan. We do, nobody else can. We approve it, but if you say, oh, skip it, do it later, then apparently we don't. All I'm asking you to do is put in what we normally do, okay? That they're normally required to have. And somebody in staff has made up this rule, well, it costs them more, so let's put it off, okay? I don't mind putting it off, I just want a review, because in this case, we've got neighbors who are going to be damaged. And they have a right to weigh in.
What I'm saying is, is we can't keep continuing jurisdiction over this permit. You can put the conditions in there, but you can't require it to come back here for. Some kind of future approval as part of it. The decision is final, whatever condition you had. If you want to prohibit, you know, landscaping in a certain area, you know, then you can put that as part of this permit, you know? Us to look at.
Hour ago, we did it with a seawall, okay? It's got a provision in there. You can't touch this again. It's in there, we just voted on it.
It does, it, there's nothing, and they're saying that, that how they're going to put the steps into the seawall, it comes back to the planning commission for additional approval.
There is something that says you can't touch this thing.
Without a new CDP.
Yeah, without a new CDP, that's.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. This is included in the project. To take it out because staff doesn't want to make them put it in. It's not what it says in the coastal.
It's not a coastal development permit, John. It's nothing to do with the coastal act.
Well, and I.
It's an exempt project from the coastal, it's exempt from a coastal development permit, so all those requirements won't apply.
Why, tell me why? In every other CDP in this whole town for thirty years. It's been a requirement and, and people are objecting to have it a requirement.
It's not a CDP. It's, that's, that's the difference here.
Okay, and we have discretion to do the, do the uh. We, if, if we say, it says in there, you can't have anything over six feet. What is the difference? Okay?
The six feet. After, after your, after your approval here tonight, there can be no more discretionary approvals. The ministerial implementation is still allowed under. You know, but you can't bring it back here for what you would have as a discretionary review. It, it travels by the process the city has put in place for.
Resolution.
The city council is the, is the body that said that people who lost their homes in fire burnouts can restore. Their previously legally entitled uh vegetation.
This is not a Woolsey fire rebuild application. It's right.
That doesn't have anything to do with it. This was a home that was lost in the fire. And whether it's a rebuild or not a rebuild, whether it's like-for-like or not a re, like-for-like, the city council has said. That they have a right to put back the vegetation that was legally established prior to the fire. Now.
Okay, then are you willing to put in? They can't put back any vegetation that wasn't legally established?
Actually, that was exactly the condition I was going to suggest that um, that, that, or something similar. Um, I think in terms of making your site plan review findings, perhaps you could. Um, add a condition, Trevor, maybe help me out with this, or anybody else um that says. Any um landscaping other than um. Law, something that was lawfully established prior to the fire um.
Change the condition that we're working with here and say anything over six feet, they must document that it was lawfully established.
Anything, any, uh, that's fine with me if it's anything that grow more than six.
All right, so any, uh, so then change number eighteen. Keep the first sentence and then should the applicant intend to plant or several changes to uh. No plant.
Uh, it's number twenty.
Is it, we're twenty, that was number eighteen.
Page eight, number twenty.
That's a septic tanks for me.
Mine says no new landscaping.
Uh, there were two resolutions. Uh, go to the first one. Commissioner Wild, I think they cited, had the old resolution for a reference. Yeah, look for twenty dash fifty-eight.
The same one. So we keep the same status and the second one would just read um, something along the lines of. Um, no new, new landscaping or vegetation. That has the potential to exceed six feet in height shall be planted. Unless it is documented that it was lawfully established before the Woolsey fire.
Could you um, add that? I mean, if, if they've, that, that means that they could never plant anything regardless of whether it's gonna impact anybody's view or not. That seems very restrictive. Could you?
They could add unless reviewed by the planning commission, like we did on every C D P there.
No, we, Bonnie, if they want to do it, then they can come back and they can a, apply to amend the conditions of the, of the project here. I mean, that's, then you have the condition in place. It would require them to come back, but you know, that would then put the process in place for them.
Okay, so.
Back here and change and amend this, okay? And that has to come to us. Okay, that's my motion. Do I have a second? I had one before.
Yeah, I would second, but I want to clarify, is it, do, have we established this has to come back to us or have we just established a new language I need to?
Then correct me if I'm wrong, Trevor. What Trevor said is they're getting administrative plan review. If they want to change it. Back they come.
So the condition's gonna prohibit any new landscaping that can grow over six feet in height. Um, unless it is documented that it was legally established before the Woolsey fire. So they can, they can put anything on the, on the property that's under six, that won't grow over six feet. If they wanted, or if it's over six feet, they have to document that it was lawfully established before the Woolsey fire. They want anything else, they'll have to come back here to apply to amend the condition.
Then, then just to be clear for the uh, neighbors, uh, in terms of their rights, as they see new growth coming in. Do they have any right to appeal if it's, they're growing the same as what was established?
So if they would, if they're saying that they illegally planted something, then they would, code enforcement, Doug will come out. You'll see if measure if it's over six feet or what they put out there.
I'm more, sorry, I'm more, sorry, I'm more seeing if they're gonna establish, reestablish something which was legally established before. There's no appeal process because they're just growing back what they had.
It's, if, if they, if they legally established it, yes, and if.
Okay.
The determination is they could challenge it if, if the term was wrong, you know, but just the same as you could challenge any ministerial decision, but um.
Okay. So I'm, I'm okay to second that.
How does this apply to um, as I walked around the property? Uh, toward the, toward the north end of the property, there are a lot of, there's a whole fruit orchard there. Um, including a couple of, of avocado trees that still have the tags on them. Um, and I don't know if those avocado trees have the potential to grow above six feet. I suspect they do. Uh, so.
They have the tags on them, they're less than thirty-five years old and they never got a permit.
So what, so what's the effect? They, those have to be taken out if somebody complains?
They can come back and get them.
They're lawfully established.
I'm trying, I'm trying to protect major view blockages and. I can't imagine the five of us would vote against an avocado tree, but you can't just throw them in and block views.
You know, more and more, I'm, I just have such gratitude for the wisdom of the. City council to keep the fire rebuilds out of the hands of this commission. Go ahead.
I mean, I, I hate to beat a dead horse here, but is it customary for people to actually keep documentation related to planting their trees? Uh, I, I have a lot of fruit trees here too. I don't know that I got permission from anybody. They don't block anybody's views. Tons of people, I mean, is it realistic to assume that people are gonna have documentation relating to what they planted twenty years ago?
David, it's, it's a requirement of the municipal code and the coastal commission. If they don't, they do it at their peril. It's like, do I build a?
I'm asking just in the real world, do people do that? Not, I understand what you're saying. I'm just not familiar with people who.
In the real world, people plant eucalyptus trees that grow to be sixty feet tall, okay? They have, you have to have some way to protect yourself. And if we're telling the applicants here or the parents. If we're telling them, we're not gonna give you any view protection, and by the way, far up some eucalyptus trees, uh, they're screwed.
It says you can't plant anything that has the potential to be more than six feet without approval. So I mean, I, it sounds to me like we're doing some protection there.
Difference of what you call approval.
Like I, I take your point. I don't agree with it, but I understand your point.
There's nothing, if you want to make it higher, you can do that too.
Yeah, we, we have a motion on the floor. Let's, can we vote on it or we?
Could you clarify, uh, there was a friendly amendment to um.
I made Jeff go me to make a motion, so I made a motion and Steve seconded it.
It's an amendment, Trevor.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to amend the motion on the floor, which is staff's recommendation. And the, the amendment is to alter condition eighteen. Um, as I previously stated, to require um, or to prohibit. Uh, planting anything that has been sure to grow over six feet unless it, they document that it was uh, that lawfully established before the Woolsey fire.
Jessica, do you have something you wanted to clarify?
Yes, um, I just wanted to bring up that in the staff presentation, I made two small little amendments to some of the findings. And I just wanted to uh, restate that for the record, so we were all on the same page.
That, uh, Commissioner Wild, that, 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 uh, Jessica's typos and corrections were part of the staff's recommendation you met as part of the motion, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
A second, Commissioner Mazza, Chair Mazza, did I correctly um, state your um, proposed amendment?
Yeah, with the understanding that what Bonnie said is, this, this would have to come back as another one of these.
If, if they wanted to do something that was not lawfully established before and they'll have to come back to amend the condition.
Right.
So is there a second for the amendment?
He was seconded.
Chris uh, seconded.
Yeah, I took another.
Okay, so let me vote on the amendment first and then we vote on the motion.
Okay, can you call a roll?
Just one moment, please.
It always takes a second for the Prime Gov software to load up so she can call the roll.
So now we're voting on John's amendment, right?
That's correct. Alter uh, condition eighteen as I stated.
Okay. So um. Vice Chair, I'm sorry, Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Wild?
No.
Commissioner Yurin?
Yes.
The amendment passes.
Now we call for a vote on David Wild's motion.
And I would, would ask one favor, Jessica, could you reread what those changes were? I didn't catch them in your presentation. I just wanted to catch those in real time with you.
Sure. So on page two.
Okay, of the resolution, of course.
Yes, of the resolution. Section three.
Yes.
And finding A.
Okay.
We're striking the word not in the second sentence of that finding.
Got it. So we're saying that there has no evidence that's been established that does block the view.
Correct. So it should read, no evidence has been presented that the proposed development will block protected primary views.
Okay, thank you.
The second would be on page four. Finding number two. And it should read as the following. The subject application was reviewed by the planning department and city biologists and was determined not to adversely impact environmental resources.
Thank you.
That it, Chris?
Or just the two sections, if I remember right, Jessica, you had called on your report, yeah.
The motion, the motion that is to approve staff's recommendation with those two changes that Jessica just made. And then including the uh, Chair Mazza's amendment, which was added to the motion.
Okay, are we ready to take a vote?
Would you please repeat who seconded that original?
I did.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I did. Jennings.
Thank you. It's, just bear with me a moment, please. Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
No.
Commissioner Wild?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Yurin?
No, I could, and for two reasons. One, I don't know what a modified like for like is. I can't find that definition anyplace. And this thing is gonna block a blue water view, which I think is unfair because the other person can't do a, a primary review presentation at this time, so I'm gonna vote no.